Well, you know why? We'll have another shot at it next month.
We're back in session. So we did have a slight mishap in the HVAC system in the bottom of this building. That has been addressed. There is the potential that we might have a similar occurrence this afternoon. If so, we've made arrangements to continue our meeting at an alternate location. So appreciate your patience, but we'll move forward with our committee work and we return back to SLA and Ms. Camnitz.
Thank you, Chair Davis. Before I turn the podium over to Ms. Shaw Coltrane for our last policy and then discussion, I would like to just point out to everyone that we did lose an awful lot of time. And if you could hold maybe urgent questions today, but maybe broader questions on the items yet to come, we'll have another look at all of these materials next month and opportunity to talk then. And I am also, as I'm sure Dr. Oxendine is, welcoming any comments or questions or anybody that anybody may have, if that would be helpful. So if we could just sort of try and keep on a fairly rapid pace here, that would be great. Ms. Shaw Coltrane.
Okay, so we were just finishing up Grad 04, where we were adding the arts graduation credit requirement. So now we're on Grad 10, which actually has to do with our graduation certificates and participation for students with disabilities. So this is actually based on the courses that are coming to you as well regarding the extended content standards. So this is bringing those into policy, replacing those courses in the appropriate graduation requirements for these certificates.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw Coltrane. We now turn to SLA 8, which is a report to the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee on the Impact of Lost Instructional Time Analysis. Dr. Corn?
Yes, ma'am.
There you are.
Good afternoon, everybody. I have been asked to truncate this a bit since this is actually just the setup for next month's report and results. So basically, all, like, just in sum, we just wanted to let the board know that as part of ESER 2, House Bill 196, the legislature mandated that DPI partner to collect, analyze, and report on overall impacts of COVID-19 to joint ed oversight. And so the report that we'll be bringing before you next month is just, will be sharing the first comprehensive authoritative statewide summary of the impact of the pandemic on student learning for all North Carolina students. Previous reports and articles about learning loss have been based on a small sample of North Carolina students and data that was available, like formative assessments or vendor-based assessments. This is using every single standardized assessment that we have for all North Carolina students available to make a statewide snapshot of the overall impact of the pandemic, and it'll be based on individual student data. We did this in partnership with our friends and that have worked with us through the EVAS team at SAS. It will be the first of its kind in North Carolina, one of the first nationally. And the reason that we're able to put this together first, be one of the first to report this out, is because of our statewide CIS commitment to longitudinal data systems, standard accountability models, and the longtime partnership with the EVAS team. The March 15 preliminary report is going to talk about main effects that will include a statewide summary by student group and school characteristics. And then the Office of Learning Recovery will gather input from state and local leaders on the interpretation of these preliminary findings to assist with decisions on next level of analysis and interactions, because we have a December 15 technical report. So this March 15 one will be this preliminary analysis of main effects. What were the major differences for different groups of students comparing their 2021 performance to their actual 2021 performance to their expected 2020, 2021 performance, given business as usual? We have done, we have been meeting weekly with the EVAS team at SAS to really make sure that the data we're presenting to this board, representing all of the schools around the state, is accurate and reliable and valid. And so we'll bring that, and it, I think it'll be our first real picture about the impact that this pandemic has had on our students. And then knowing also, I think this board has been very, very encouraging and thoughtful about the fact that it's not just about the numbers. So the Office of Learning Recovery, in response to some of the questions you all have brought to us, we're also prioritizing qualitative data and additional IES federally funded data to look and dig into what's going on with those different groups, different schools all across the state.
Thank you, Dr. Corn. Questions? We'll get to see the actual data next month.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing that. SLA 9 is also a report to the JLEC on Competency-Based Education Comprehensive Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. Good afternoon, everyone. Falling in line with Jenny, I will also truncate this presentation. I apologize for not being there in person. We have the ASCD conference here in Pinehurst today, so I do apologize. This report calls for, it is due to the General Assembly on March 15, 2022 as well. And this report has some specific requirements within it. So basically, as you see on the slide, it has, it calls for a method of deployment for a competency-based education program. It calls for some information about credit by demonstrated mastery, the impact on teachers with regards to their licensure, estimated cost analysis, and then additional information about the competency-based tool that has some appropriations for that. And the slides have far more background than I'm going to cover, so if you have questions, certainly we can answer those in March or after the presentation. But there is basically some background with competency-based education at the state level. And this just details where we started in terms of the previous report that was due to the JLOC back in May of, I think it was May of 2020, and then our 2021 progress with House Bill 82 and the summer learning programs and the use of a CBA tool for those programs. In addition, last year in 2021, we convened the Operation Polaris Reforming Accountability and Testing Work Group, and that has since branched off into, it is still one work group, but we've also formed two subcommittees from that to focus on CBE and CBA. And then if you recall, the State Board approved a definition of a CBA tool, or CBA regarding it as a tool back in 2021. And so just for a reminder, that definition is provided there, and we are keeping that in mind as we move forward to the next phase, which is the $9 million that was appropriated to us to contract with a third-party entity for a period of up to three years for a new software platform. And that will essentially help our students, help the teachers, parents, and students to navigate which academic standards and competencies those students know and which ones they are struggling with. We are in the process of developing an RFP, or Request for Proposals, for that. And our intentions are to contract as soon as that RFP process is complete. We would love for that to be ready for summer, but fall is really our hard and fast timeline because we really want to be able to use a CBA tool as we move forward and to use it sooner than later to know where our students are at and make sure we are personalizing their instruction. The report also details how our Portrait of a Graduate work is interwoven into our CBE plan as we move forward. Kristi Van Aken and Dr. Davis DeGaulle presented on this last month, so I'm not going to cover that. Just note that they will work, the Portrait of a Graduate will work in tandem with our CBE plan. And then in addition, the report calls for some information on credit by demonstrated mastery, and Sneha is with me today to talk a little bit more about that, so I'll turn it over to her.
So those of you who have been with us here at the board for a while may remember kind of our first entree into competency-based education, and it was our equivalence to the Arizona Grand Canyon diploma was credit by demonstrated mastery. And this notion is that students go through a process to show us if they're able to master the content of a high school course without any seat time. And so there is an appropriate process. It's built into your Course for Credit 01 policy. There is some history here as well for those courses, high school courses that have EOCs. The EOC is the first phase. For those courses that don't, a teacher-made assessment of some sort is given, and then some type of artifact looking at application of the content. And so that is available to all students for all courses in high school and for any in middle school that a district deemed would like to do. You have lots of other information here for you. I will add, and I know Superintendent Truitt and I have discussed this, our CDM with capital may not necessarily match the credit by demonstrated mastery intent of what's in that legislation. But right now, this is what we have, and it will continue to move forward as a way for a student to accelerate through a high school course.
That's important to know. As Sneha says, that this report, as you'll read, is really progress toward a CBE plan. We will have a CBE plan, and we are working toward that at the passing of this report requirement that was, you know, fairly recently, in the last couple of months. And so we are getting there, but we did not quite have that plan in place. So these are more reports on progress towards CBE and what we're currently doing as a state that will lead toward that. So just please keep that in mind as well. As I mentioned, this report calls for an impact on teachers regarding their licensure. Tom Tomberlin presented on this last month as well about the work of the Pepsi Commission. And so they are still in the process of discussing what that will look like for teachers in terms of competencies toward license renewal. So that is included in the report. And then, as I mentioned also, the report calls for associated costs to include an estimate of projected costs beyond what is currently allocated. And so we have included that in the report as well. It's important to note that it is difficult to provide a cost estimate when we're still in the process of developing what the CBE plan is. And so we've done our best, but of course, that is definitely an estimate, as you see there, especially with the teacher professional development competency. They have not yet done that cost analysis, so that is to be coming. And then some next steps and topics for consideration. It is worthwhile to take some time for us, when the time is right, to discuss the difference between credit by demonstrated mastery as it exists in our state right now and competency-based education. And then, as a department, we will continue to proceed forward with the Portrait of a Graduate work, the CBE and CBA subcommittees, and of course, the work of the Pepsi Commission, all leading toward this comprehensive CBE plan that this report calls for.
Thank you, Dr. Melanix. Does anyone have any questions? Again, we'll see this again next month. Questions that you'd like to ask today? All right. Thank you, Dr. Melanix. We do have four consent items in the SLA meeting today. The first is SLA 10, Report to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee on Cursive Writing and Multiplication Tables. That's fairly self-explanatory, but there is a required report on assurances that those two things are being taught in the classrooms across North Carolina. And then we have three high schools in Haywood County that have opted to seek State Board accreditation. As you will recall, we've been steadily sort of having these come before us. And so it is recommended that all three of these be approved. They are, SLA 11 is Tuscola High School, SLA 12 is Pisgah High School, and SLA 13 is Haywood Early College High School. And I will add that during our conversation in committee about these particular accreditations, but also more broadly around the recognition that we have an increasing number of schools seeking accreditation from us rather than other of the other avenues, it's become apparent to us that our internal process was in need of review. And so consequently, Superintendent Truitt has agreed to convene a group to discuss the process and bring recommendations to the board to improve and perhaps make it a little more meaningful for the schools that go through the process. So we'll have that to come. And thank you for that. And with that being said, Chair Davis, that is the completion of the SLA business.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. We will move the Government and Community Affairs Committee to tomorrow's agenda slot and proceed on to the Educator Standards and Practice Committee chaired by Dr. Libby Oxendine. Dr. Oxendine.
Dr. Oxendine, if you're talking, you're muted.
Oh, you did not hear my famous speech. I was on mute. I'm very sorry. Let me start again. Good afternoon to everyone, and thank you, Chair Davis. I do chair the ESMP, and joining me in that responsibility is Ms. Amy White. I think the word of the day or of the morning and early afternoon is truncate, so I will do my very best to do that. Coming up is Dr. Tom Tomberlin, and he's going to give a, probably a thumbnail sketch of what we heard about last month with regard to additional dollars from the General Assembly and how he and his team has decided to distribute that money. So, Dr. Tomberlin, go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Welcome, board members, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about the Advanced Teaching, Teacher Compensation Models and Advanced Teaching Roles RFP. The first portions of these slides are, were presented last month. They outline the program and its purposes, and then a recap of the Evaluation Committee. And that yielded four proposals that we recommend for funding for this fiscal year. There were some, as we discussed last month, there was some additional appropriations from the legislature for this year of $2,400,000 that needs to be spent by June 30, 2022. So in order to allocate that money into the hands of folks who can use it by that deadline, we have recommended to go back to the 2020 cohort that was, programs that were approved. We did not fully fund those programs, and so our first recommendation was to go back and provide, fully fund them at their requested amounts. And that is on Slide 10, where you can see what they asked for, what we funded, and then the difference. The proposal is that we fund them not only for the 2021 school year, but the 2122 school year, so that's two years of funding for them. And then if we move on to 2021 funding proposal, 2122 fiscal year funding proposals, you'll see the numbers there. I had to modify this slightly, and that is reflected on Slide 12, and I'd like to walk that through you that very quickly. 2021 Proposed Grantees. We're recommending that we issue $717,830 to those four programs for planning fundings for the upcoming implementation year, which is actually 2223. The reason, this is a large amount of money. We have contacted these districts and asked them to tell us what and how much money they could use for the purposes of getting ready for full implementation. Those numbers that you see there for Proposal 1, 2, 3, and 4 reflect their response to that, and we have, we have recommended that funding to go to them, to prepare them to meet the challenges of implementation in 2223. Then you see the 2020 Grantee Reconciliation Funding. That totals $442,170. And then the prior cohort renewal application. As you recall, there are programs that still in existence that do not receive state funding. As a result of that, they do not appreciate the class-size flexibility that comes with state funding. So our proposal is to award them $75,000 per year to allow them to keep their programs going to meet the requirement for state funding so they can exercise that class-size flexibility, which is so important to maintaining this, these models, and that's $600,000. To clarify this, they would receive $75,000 in this fiscal year and for the next three fiscal years. So it falls under the legislature's allowance that an existing program can reapply for funding. This gets them, they could reject this money and reapply again for an RFP, but we explained the situation to them, and most of them have agreed that they'd rather just take the $75,000 and not reapply as an RFP, just continue their programs. And then you'll see $280,000 for the initial contract for evaluation. That represents the 4% that's allowable by statute for the DPI to reserve for program evaluation of the Advanced Teaching Roles. That is actually a two-year, that picks up 2021 and 2022, leverages this funding, which 2021 was the year that we became responsible for that evaluation, and this provides the funding for that evaluation. And I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Hearing on this item is going to be dealt with tomorrow. It is, we're going to take action tomorrow on this. And with that completed, thank you, Dr. Tomberlin.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to move to the next item, and that item is, that item is, this is our first discussion item, ESMP 2, and it is pertaining to LICN 006. And this pertains to giving years of credit for the candidates who are completing the, they're in the full-time Masters of School Administration, completing the full-time internship. So, Dr. Tomberlin, are you doing that one?
I am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. So this is a proposed revision to LICN 006 that we have brought forward from Pepsi. This relates to experience credit for internships, for those folks doing an internship as part of their MSA program. So the current policy would allow for someone doing the, doing their internship through the Principal Fellows Program and only those to be awarded a year of credit, a year of experience credit for fulfilling that 10-month internship. We believe this is an equity issue since TP3 has merged with Principal Fellows, and we've expanded the notion of a paid internship to anyone who completes a full-time MSA program. And so it seems right that we would grant that year of experience to anyone who completed that 10-month internship on a paid stipend. So you can see here, the policy says that they'll be awarded that year of experience if they meet the following criteria: enrolled in an approved EPP as a full-time MSA student, and completes a 10-month internship in a public school unit, and receives a state-funded stipend, or completes a 10-month internship in a public school unit and receives a stipend from a non-state-funded source. So that allows any grantee programs that come along that support principal internship, if they're paying the stipend, we would still recognize that. Or even the LEAs themselves may choose to support a candidate through local funds for an internship period. If that's the case, we will recognize that. This seemed very straightforward up until our committee call, when it became apparent that there was, there was always, as always, there's a little loophole in all this. So I've created some scenarios for you to explain what the issue is. So this policy would intersect with our regular experience credit policy. So any state employee who's paid with state funds, licensed employee who works six or more months, gets credit for a year of experience. So for Intern A, they complete a 10-month internship funded by the state. Yeah, it's clear they get a year of experience. Intern B does it funded by an LEA or grant. They also get a year of experience. Intern C completes four months of a paid internship, is hired by the district, and finishes out the school year six months as an AP. Well, this person would also be granted a year of experience because they're satisfying the employment side of the year of experience, but not this policy around the internship. However, Intern D completes a five-month of paid internship and five months as an AP, they would meet neither, they would meet neither condition of those two policies and would not receive a year of experience credit. And so we wanted to raise this issue, and we can, we can readdress this policy and take it back to Pepsi, where we account for any combination of those two programs. Now, it seems like a very easy fix, but when we talk to folks about this, there is the concern that a lot of interns are not getting that full internship experience. They're quickly moving over into the, into the employment side and not really getting all the benefit of that, of that internship period. So that is something that needs to be considered and thought about. I'm not sure that this is the right lever to incentivize that kind of continued internship period. We need to think of other ways that we would incentivize our folks to remain as those interns get those really important experiences before they move into the employment side. But if it is the board's direction, we can certainly take this back to Pepsi to clarify those, that piece of the policy. The next piece is in LICN 006, but it's actually unrelated to this. This was a mistake in the policy. It does not conform with state statute, and so we needed to correct this. This is about graduate pay requirements. We had an "or" in the two criteria you see there for qualifying for graduate pay, and in fact, it is an "and." So we have corrected that. And the important part is the second part. They qualified for the salary supplement pursuant to State Board of Education policy, LICN 006, as it was in effect on June 30, 2013. So we had to assume that it was just as difficult for, for the field to find out what the policy was at that time as it was for staff. And so we have researched that, and we have pulled that piece of, of the policy from 2013 out and put it into the current policy, so everybody's clear what those requirements are, what the board requirements were at that time. And this is, it's a little more than a technical fix, so we wanted to bring your attention to it, and this is also part of the policy recommendation for LICN 006. Dr. Oxendine, we'll pause there in case there's any questions on LICN 006.
Thank you very much, and I will ask that question of my colleagues and the advisors if you have a question or a comment. This is a little bit complicated material. I do want to go back for just a moment, Dr. Tomberlin, if you would go back to your scenarios that you presented. That was very helpful. And when I see it, scenarios, I begin thinking of the other ones. So let me ask about this. The Intern D, who will not be eligible for the year of experience, is that the difference? It says the six-month intern would, converting to an AP, the five months, converting to an AP, middle of the internship, works five years AP. Is it the one-month difference? Is that what makes the difference in getting that year or not?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. They would not meet the employment side of the credit policy, and therefore, they, they're kind of in this limbo between the two.
The other question that I have pertains to retirement. Is the district, are the districts picking up the retirement for the full-time intern?
That is on a case-by-case basis, so that is, that is specific to the LEA or the program in which they're enrolled, the grant under which they're operating for the TP3 folks. In some cases, that answer is yes. Either the grant steps in or the LEA agrees to pay retirement contribution, but technically, these folks are not employees. And so there's no obligation on the part of the LEA to pay retirement. And so there's no obligation on the part of the LEA to pay retirement on this stipend.
So, and you probably are about to, you may have answered my question just a second ago, but let me get it on the table anyway. What about the intern, full-time intern, who works out an arrangement with the LEA to do the full-time internship, isn't an employee of that, isn't an employee of the district? But becomes, let's say, at the end of the internship, Superintendent D appreciates the hard work, hires the full-time intern as an AP. That year of experience would not be retroactive, would it?
Well, so let me clarify something initially. Years of experience is not specific to any employer, it is a state-level measure. So regardless of which LEA, so I did my internship in LEA, let's say, for example, Halifax County, but then actually Bertie County hired me. Would I still get the year of experience? Absolutely. Because I met the requirements to gain that year of experience. That is a state-level designation, not specific to the LEA. Does that help, or am I misunderstanding the question?
You're on track.
Okay.
We'll talk about that just a little bit more. We're truncating, so I'm going to move along.
Sure.
Excellent, excellent scenarios. Thank you. You can proceed.
Thanks. So LICN 02, this is a simple but important fix to the policy. This is in relation to NC pre-kindergarten teachers in non-public settings. So we defined what that is, there was some confusion about that, and that is any entity not under the authority of the North Carolina State Board of Education. And the policy does go on to state that they have to work through the Division of Child Development and Early Education in order to qualify for this non-public setting designation. So we will work with those folks to license them in pre-K. The issue was that the policy indicated lateral entry, which of course has sunset, and so we have just changed the language to residency to reflect the new, the route to licensure that most of these folks use. And that is the substance of that policy recommendation.
Okay, very good. Any questions, comments from colleagues and/or advisors? If not, we will move along to ESMP4. And this is, this is an application from the University of Phoenix for approval to operate in North Carolina as an EPP. And I believe, Dr. Seiberg, you have the honors.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Good afternoon, board members. For this item, we're bringing the formal application for the University of Phoenix to the board for consideration. This proposal's been peer-reviewed and refined based on the feedback from that review process. Dr. Oxendine has also had a follow-up conversation with the organization to ask some additional clarification questions regarding how that program incorporates science of reading into the curriculum. And we've provided on eBoard all the materials associated with the application and the supporting documentation associated with it. And that's it for that item.
Thank you very much. It was a very good conversation yesterday afternoon with several officials from the College of Education, University of Phoenix, and I did ask, I bet a 30-minute session, some very pointed questions, and made it very clear to the professors and the officials, the dean and associate deans, and faculty members at North Carolina's pushing hard with science of reading. They offered some very specific examples of ways science of reading theory and principles are working through various courses in the elementary area as well as special education. So I'm very, very, be pleased that University of Phoenix really, they're going to do some good things. So that's a very good, I'm pleased with that proposal. Any questions or comments?
Dr. Oxendine, this is Catherine.
Yes, Superintendent Truitt.
So, thank you so much for taking the time to reach out to the University of Phoenix to have those good conversations. I'm wondering if any data around the foundations of reading test has come up, and whether or not they are going to have committed to moving forward with the new test at a certain date.
That is a good question. We could certainly follow up and get some specifics around that. This is a discussion item, we have plenty of time to do that, and we could certainly arrange another call. Dr. Seiberg and Dr. Evans would be willing to do that, you might want to join us.
Thank you. As our own institutions in the state have committed to doing so.
Absolutely. And you're causing me to even think about EDTPA.
Yes, ma'am, exactly. That was.
Or PPA T, absolutely. So why don't we just follow up with another call?
Thank you.
And I will certainly roll you into it. I love talking about science of reading.
Thank you.
It was a good conversation. All right, thank you, Dr. Seiberg. And the next item is the, we're still talking about licensure requirements for school administrators, and I believe this presentation is going to give us a batch of recommendations from our stakeholder groups. So, Dr. Seiberg, you have the honors again.
Thank you, ma'am. So this is a continuation of the work around the challenges the department identified to meet expectations in 115(c)-284, and that law is associated with the principal preparation requirements. Today, I'm going to provide a quick review of what's happened so far, because we've spoken about this with the board twice over the past couple of months. So I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page with it, and then share some information that we collected from the field on their thoughts as we think about 115(c)-284, and any potential changes that might need to be voiced. I do want to be clear here before we start, that the decision eventually coming to the board is not a policy decision. Instead, this is a legislative ask. So what the board is, needs to grapple with here are around actually changing the law associated with 115(c)-284, and what the board feels is best for developing effective principles in North Carolina. So it's a little bit different than just a policy ask. So if we can go to, oh, you're already there, great. So I just want to give you a quick review. We discovered that there were a couple of components associated with 115(c)-284 that we were not in compliance with, and I want to share what those areas are. That'll help frame some things in a couple of minutes. Under Section B1, to qualify, there's a list of qualifiers for certification as a school administrator. The fifth one in that list, I spared you all the other ones, but the fifth one is one that is not currently in place in our process, and that is passing an exam adopted by the state board. Our understanding, after doing some review, was that the principal exam was removed back in August of 2011. So right now, we don't have an exam in place. On the next slide, under C2 of the law, the State Board of Education shall adopt new standards, and under those standards, if you see little item number seven there, it's requiring that all candidates complete a year-long internship. What's not been decided yet is a proper definition, a formal definition, of year-long internship. Under D1, on the next slide, when we think about the prerequisites to candidacy for principal preparation, a classroom teacher must have attained at least the second level of differentiation, which we assume is a continuing professional license or a CPL, and have at least four years of classroom teaching experience, and possess at least a master's degree specifically in education administration. And then, so those are the things that we first identified, and then in, I want to say, it might have been around November, there was some, a lot of movement afoot behind the scenes to help shore up some of the challenges that we identified with this issue. And that manifested in Session Law 2021-170. And essentially, what that did was it solved for all the issues of any candidate that might have been out of compliance over the past 10 years or so, that was practicing out in the field. So in other words, if I didn't take a test in 2012, I don't have to go back and take a test, or, you know, we sort of solved that problem at that point. And then the other thing that happened there is it also solved for any folks that are currently in the pipeline. So basically, if I started a principal prep program, I have taken a couple of classes, I can continue at pace, and I'm not going to be sort of, I'm not going to have to change or do a lot of crazy things in the middle of my program. I can finish, as long as I've started at least one class, I've taken and completed at least one class towards that program prior to August 31st of 2022. So this is coming, this coming August. Now, what 2021-170 didn't do on the next slide is it did not account for anyone entering the pipeline after August 31st of 2022. So what that means is, if I'm starting a principal prep program after 2022, August 31st of 2022, all those existing rules that I mentioned earlier are suddenly now in place again. And that has, that does have some repercussions on the pipeline in general. When we examined the candidates in the pipeline for 2021, we saw a total of 924 candidates, of which 323, or about 35% of them, are engaged in a licensure-only program. In other words, they have a master's degree, but they do not have a master's degree specifically in school administration. So that's one of those areas that I just want to draw your attention to. It would affect the pipeline. It won't affect the pipeline tomorrow, because folks that are in the pipeline right now are allowed to continue through their process. It will affect the pipeline for the next cohort going in. So we were tasked, the last time we presented to the board about this item, a couple of months ago, we were asked to collect feedback from the field on this topic, to get some stakeholder input in what the field is thinking about regarding this, and some of the challenges. And I'm going to share their input in a moment, what you see in front of you are the three groups that we looked at, and I'll go through each of them briefly. But first, I want to sort of frame what I'm going to share with you from each of these groups with the questions that ultimately the board is going to have to consider on the next two slides. This is ultimately what the board has to grapple with. So the first is, under the licensure exam, it has to do with test selection. So does the State Board of Education believe that a license exam is essential in licensing principals? And if the answer to that is no, then what other measures might be used to maintain the rigor and quality associated with what was intended with that test? The second section of thought is around the year-long internship and defining that. So the current legislation requires a 10-month internship. Should policy allow for an equivalent internship in terms of defining that by hours? And should the internship period, either monthly or hourly, be the same for part-time MSA programs, as, in other words, the same amount of time for part-time versus the traditional MSA programs? On the next slide, there's two other sections that the board is amidst pondering here, is around the teaching experience. Should the requirements for principal licensure include a minimum number of years for teaching experience, specifically teaching experience? So in other words, if you say teaching experience, then you are then making a case for someone who might have a bunch of years of experience as, say, a guidance counselor in a school, that would have to essentially go back, get a teacher's license, teach for X number of years, and then start a principal preparation program going forward, as the law is currently listed. Okay? And then lastly, the Masters in School Administration, the actual MSA program, is it, is it, is an MSA a requirement for principal licensure to the exclusion of all other master's degrees? And again, that's what I mentioned earlier, there are some programs that are licensure-only, they're essentially add-on programs, that you have to have a master's degree, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a Masters in School Administration. So these are the things that are on the docket for consideration. So let's go to the various stakeholders we talked to over the past few weeks. The first is the Teacher Recruitment and Retention Task Force. That's a group that has been meeting here at the building, I want to say quarterly at the very least, sometimes every other month, for a number of years now. It includes K-12 personnel, LEA, superintendents, human resource folks, licensure folks. And we asked, the reason I framed those questions earlier for the board is because that's what we framed for all of these groups. So we're asking all the same, the same questions in the same groups. So regarding the year-long internship, this particular stakeholder group was unanimous in agreeing to a year-long internship. They felt that the part-time program candidates, that there may be a rationale for providing an additional option to hold a provisional license for the principal license, so that they could effectively be an assistant principal for a year and demonstrate effectiveness in the assistant principal capacity before they would move on to a principal license. So that was a consideration that they brought forward. And then also, for out-of-state principal candidates, or out-of-state principals, they need to have at least one year of experience as a principal or an assistant principal, or have completed an internship from the other state in order to get the license here in North Carolina. And then lastly, on the licensure exam on this slide, this group was unanimously in agreement to not require licensure exam. And they prefer performance-based data as opposed to a pencil-and-paper test in order to fulfill the requirement for the principal license. Now, on the next slide, there's a couple of other areas that we talked about, the teacher experience, regarding the teacher experience. Their suggestion was to complete four years of experience in a school, not teaching experience, but general experience in the school. In other words, they're allowing for the idea of non-teacher folks like school counselors, school psychologists, social workers, to be allowed to head down the principal preparation pathway. And then the second bullet's a little bit wonky, but basically what they're saying there is, if there's an out-of-state person that has four years of teaching experience, they can enter a principal prep program there. And then regarding the Masters in School Administration, they were in favor of allowing for either the Masters of School Administration or a complete licensure program. So in other words, if you're going to have a reduced part-time program, it better make sure that you're covering every standard, that you're not shortening the quality or the amount of things that you're getting in that program, that you're definitely, you're covering all the bases that need to be covered regarding the standards. So that's the Teacher Recruitment Retention Task Force. Then we spoke with the Principal Advisory Group. That group includes state and regional principals of the year. It's led by Tabari Wallace. It also includes representation from NC Papa. And we asked them the same questions. So regarding a year-long internship, they agreed that the 10-month internship was a healthy solution, but they also liked the idea of having it be a flexible 10 months, that you could start it anywhere along the way, and, you know, that as long as you're getting the 10 months, that would be sufficient. They suggested an hour equivalency for year-long internship as 1,000 hours, and that equates to six hours a day for 185 days. Regarding the part-time MSA interns, there was this discussion around the need to complete an hour equivalent. So in other words, maybe I'm a part-time principal, and I have the same hour requirement as the full-time folks, but it may take me longer than a year to do it, because I'm only doing the internship a couple of hours each day, as opposed to a full day. But in other words, trying to keep all that requirement the same across the part-time and the full-time. They talked a little bit about the principal mentor requirement, which was, you know, it's sort of an additional comment around the principal mentor being deemed effective at the school site prior to placement, and that the superintendents are directly involved with the student-mentor placements. And they also championed the notion of considering a multi-grade level experience during the internship. So in other words, if I, if my internship is primarily in elementary school, for example, that is there a way that we can move that internship around to some other grade-level areas? areas so this additional experience can be, can be had, so that, so that they have a more robust experience going out into the field when they're practicing? On the second slide for Principal Advisory, regarding the licensure exam, they were not in support requiring the licensure exam. They didn't, they didn't see it as relevant to performance as an administrator in a school. They were instead in proposing the notion of utilizing the portfolios to replace the licensure exam requirement, and that's a current practice across the state largely as is. And then on the next slide, if we think back to the previous group that I shared, essentially what they're saying here is they like the idea of folks being allowed to pursue the principal process as long as they have three years. So they're saying three years is sufficient based on their experience, not four, but they also like the idea of both teachers and non-instructional folks within the school setting having three years of experience should be allowed to pursue that. And then lastly, regarding the Masters of School Administration, they support the idea of a master's being required, but not exclusively in the MSA. All right. And then lastly, we leveraged the broad reach of NCACTE, that's the North Carolina Association of Colleges for Teacher Education. They are increasingly a very valuable asset for the state to gather information and also disseminate information to the ed prep program. So we appreciate their, sharing their network to be able to gather some information. They actually took this question and created a survey, and they surveyed all of the ed prep programs that had principal preparation programs. So there were 23 in the state. They heard back from 20 of them. This is a summation that you're seeing here. They basically are not in favor of a licensure exam requirement. Regarding the year-long internship, they summarized that as having, at a minimum, a minimum of two semesters, or complete a minimum of 300 to 500 hours. Under the teacher, the teaching experience, their suggestion was including teachers and support personnel, so not to exclude the guidance counselors and social workers. And then lastly, regarding the Masters of School Administration, they were in favor of a master's degree at large as the minimum, and not requiring specifically a master's degree in school administration as a qualifier for entrance into the program. So that's the data we collected over the past four to six weeks. In terms of next steps, there is a subcommittee that was convened for Pepsi. We just arbitrarily named it the Principal Licensure Subcommittee, and they were, they were looking at these same four areas. They also have the data that you're seeing now, and they're going to reflect on that and provide their own suggestion to you as an additional layer of input into your thought process. Although I do want to stress this idea that this is not a policy recommendation, this is ultimately a suggestion for a change in the law. So their suggestion to you doesn't fall under the same process that ordinarily happens with Pepsi. In other words, if you disagree with what Pepsi suggests, it doesn't necessarily go back to Pepsi so much as it's, this is, this is what we're hearing from the field and this is what we think is our perception of that going forward. And that's where we're at.
Thank you, Dr. Seiberg. Do I have any questions or comments from my colleagues and/or our advisors?
I do, Dr. Oxendine. It's Catherine.
Go right ahead, Superintendent Truitt.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for being so diligent in the feedback you've collected, the three stakeholder groups, and for Tabari Wallace for creating his Principal Advisory Group and lending its expertise to this endeavor. I appreciate what you said about that this board will not be voting on this policy as such at this time. That's correct, right?
Yes.
I just need to say out loud that one of the challenges that I feel is really plagues our teachers in particular, are well-intentioned administrators who are not instructional leaders being responsible for formal observations that are evaluative and go on a teacher's record, so to speak. And so, if we don't require teaching experience, and I want to be inclusive of school support personnel, but if a principal has not had classroom teaching experience and has not, and then becomes a principal and is charged with delivering, again, evaluative observations for teachers, I can just tell you, anecdotally, from talking to other teachers and myself, I have experienced this myself, it's very demoralizing when you have, when you sit down and have a teacher observation session and the person who's giving you feedback is not equipped to be useful. And what this leads me to believe, once again, is that we need to think about a different model for school leadership, and perhaps, this is yet another example of where master teachers could take this off of the plate of administrators if they so choose, and those master teachers could be delivering those observations in subsequent debriefings.
Thank you, Superintendent Truitt. Those were comments and suggestions that you made that I certainly agree with fully. It's the integrity of the person called the school leader in terms of maintaining that integrity and being perceived with a high degree of integrity when it comes to understanding instruction. The teacher is going to look to that principal. If you don't think I am doing a good job with small group instruction, then could you give me some suggestions? And if the principal can't offer suggestions because he or she lacks classroom teaching experience, therein is, therein is the, is the problem, as I see it. This is a major issue, a major discussion point, a major topic, and as far as, you know, from my purview of my role on the State Board of Education, since I've served in this capacity, it's, it's just one of the biggies for me. And I suppose it's because I've heard me say it, I'm sounding ad nauseam. I've lived it, I live in this world. But let me make sure I understand something, Dr. Seiberg, and I don't have all the details, but I'm going to kind of give a big summary of what I see could be possible based on the recommendations from the stakeholder groups. And like the superintendent, I have the utmost respect for those groups. Seasoned administrators or seasoned professors, seasoned practitioners who understand the world of K-12 and understand a lot about, much about the classroom and school leadership. So let me just not even set that aside. I'm going to keep that front and center. But based on what I'm hearing, and I'll use the out-of-state principal, for instance, because there are some recommendations about out-of-state principals who come to North Carolina, they want to continue in school leadership. So it is very possible that we could have an out-of-state principal coming to North Carolina to be a principal in one of our 115 systems with an, with some undefined classroom experience, not necessarily classroom as we know it, but some teaching experience. It is very possible that that person could also, based on the three stakeholder groups who are all, seems like unanimous, not believing that a licensure exam is necessary in order to practice school leadership in the state of North Carolina. So that out-of-state person could come to us with no licensure exam, some kind of maybe class teaching experience, and no defined internship. Because I think the recommendation for the out-of-state individual was maybe a part-time internship, I'm not sure. But that, that could be our reality in terms of a principal, out-of-state principal coming to North Carolina to continue his or her craft in the area of leading schools. And that's troubling. You know, I just can imagine that weak level of quality in a candidate, a prospective leader in our state, school leader in our state. So I would think, one of the things that I'd like to say, and I'm going to wrap up, I don't mean to turn this into a silique by Olivia Oxendine, and it sounds like it's turning into one, but it seems to me that Pepsi needs to truly sit down and define what is an internship. Not necessarily just to define it, but to describe a full-time internship. Because that is also the full-time internship, according to Dr. Tomberlin's presentation, we're going to be acting on a policy very soon to give that individual a year of experience. So what is a full-time internship? I would say that would be one of the hot items, one of the main points that Pepsi needs to grapple with. And also defining the part-time internship, what does that really mean, part-time, in terms of hours? Should it be spread out sporad, I mean, across several months? More of a description of the part-time and definitely the full-time. So those are my comments. By the way, what does a principal do? Because it's unanimous so far, it's very unanimous that the stakeholder groups don't believe that a licensure exam is necessary for the school leader in North Carolina. The school leader does the following. The school leader is responsible for the safety of students, the safety of the facility, the maintenance of the facility, financial operations, the transportation of students, the administration, the administration and the implementation of special education, IDEA. And we know how complicated that is when it comes to state and federal laws and regulations. Now, this is the, and I'm only giving you a thumbnail of the role of the principal. I haven't even touched on the leader of instruction, which is a world unto itself. The job is incredibly complex and incredibly important. And a licensure exam does one thing, it doesn't predict, it's not a crystal ball. It doesn't say that that person is going to be outstanding and exemplary. We hope that happens as a result, but what it does say, it tells North Carolina citizens that this individual is prepared to go into a school and lead and manage that school, is prepared to do those things. So the licensure exam is about the preparation of that individual, not about forecasting the effectiveness of that individual. Those are very two different animals in terms of tests and exams. Thank you for indulging me. Okay.
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes, I hear some, a comment or a question?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Dr. Seiberg two things. One, Bizop five just discussed, my understanding was, at least at one point in time, and I thought it was still the case, as I second Superintendent Truitt's remarks, which I agree with, but at one point, I thought the law states that with respect to principal review of instruction in the classroom, that was possible for the principal to designate some portion of that to some other person who was otherwise qualified to perform those services. Is that still the state of the law?
I think that is the state of the law.
I don't have that in front of me, but I believe that that is still in place.
Just as we consider this, I want to have that straight, where that, where the law is on that as we go forward the next time.
Okay.
And I apologize for this, in retrospect on ESFP4, had this question, which was about the University of Phoenix.
Yes, sir.
It strikes me, they've been in business for a long time and have undoubtedly sought to make, to qualify as a EPP in a number of states. Do we have any information on their track record with, if you will, that is, whether they're qualified in states and what the, you know, what the experience has been in those states in which they're qualified?
Yeah, and they're, I can, I can provide you a lot of information about it, but they most recently got permission to function as an educated preparation program in the state of California, and they've also been in, obviously, in Arizona for many, many years. So, and it's interesting, they, they kind of like the Western Governors program, were operating in North Carolina, but they were licensing teachers in Arizona, and then those folks were coming back in as out-of-state licensed candidates. So this is a very, they're very familiar with North Carolina policy, they're very familiar with North Carolina law, they're just trying to move from the out-of-state hurdle to functioning within the North Carolina context. So they, they have a lot of experience in that area.
Which benefits the teacher candidate?
Yeah. Well, I guess what I was really asking, if there's some body of experience out there where there are, which appears to be, we have some, or in other states, it would be beneficial just to hear that as part of the, as we finish the discussion at the next meeting.
Sure, I'd be happy to flesh that out for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there other questions? If not, we'll go on to the next item. The next item is the limited licensed update, but in, considering the time element, Chair Davis, I would like to, for you to entertain the possibility of delaying that item until another time, to save on the, since we're under such time constraints.
Sure, that will work fine, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you very much. And so, thank you to Dr. Tomberlin and Dr. Seiberg, a fine job, as always.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Oxendine. We'll now move to the Healthy Responsible Students Committee chaired by Mr. Reginald Keenan. Mr. Keenan?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I'm Reginald Keenan, along with Alan Duncan, we are co-chairing on the HRS Committee. Mr. Chair, we have two items, but the first one would be the action item, and Ms. Angel Bass will come forth and talk about the leverage of NCMTSS recommendations.
Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, other board members, advisors, community members, and my colleagues from DPI, good afternoon. I'm Angel Goodwine-Bass, and I have the privilege of leading the Integrated Academic and Behavior Systems Team that supports the implementation and sustainability of a multi-tiered system of support here in North Carolina to all LEAs, charters, and non-traditional programs. Today, I'm here to introduce a team of my colleagues, Dr. Matt Hoskins, Beth Rice, and Heidi Austin, to review the recommendations that were shared during the November and January board meetings to be heard for action today. And first, we'll have Dr. Matt Hoskins.
Good afternoon, Chair Davis, Superintendent Truitt, board members and advisors. Thanks so much for the opportunity to be here today, for us to share these recommendations. I do want to preface these recommendations that these were not generated by those of us that are presenting today, that this is a result of countless hours of working with educational leaders across the state to get a really good understanding of what their needs are at the current time in supporting their students. And what our big idea that we want to capture with these recommendations is that we really have a humbling responsibility to prepare over one and a half million students, to have every opportunity that we can offer to them to successfully participate in what is a constantly changing environment, and one that we're trying to do so when the environment that poses differential accessibility to those opportunities that we are trying to provide. And so, just with, as we contemplate the sheer magnitude- And so, just with the, as we contemplate the sheer magnitude, the complexity of this responsibility, it's reassuring to know two things. First is that it's not an individual responsibility for any of us, that it's a collective responsibility that we share with the educators, the students, the families of North Carolina. And our ability to meet these responsibilities is really only bound by our collective creativity and determination. And second, we're not doing the work in the dark. We're fortunate to find ourselves in a moment of time where we can confidently lean on high-quality research that allows us to move forward with our creativity and determination. So as the recommendations are presented, I hope that you will see that there are explicit connections to the State Board Strategic Plan and Operation Polaris. We have heard loudly from local leaders and their faculty that they're both in fragile places right now, both our students and faculty, but also in a place where, when provided the right opportunities, we can foster resiliency and grit. We also know from a compelling research base that academic success does not live in a vacuum. Our kids come to school every day with a whole host of social determinants that impact their ability to be successful in school. This is physical health, their nutrition, their mental health, their ability to engage socially with others. These are only a small number of the aspects of the whole child that impact educational attainment and the ability for students to develop employability skills. So at this point, I'm happy to yield to my colleagues to describe more of these recommendations and how they align to the work of the State Board Strategic Plan and Operation Polaris.
Thank you, Dr. Hoskins. I actually think we could go ahead and sit down, but I think that we will go ahead and go through with the four recommendations. So after we shared these four recommendations at the State Board of Education Planning Session in November, we came back and engaged in some intentional conversation here at the state agency with the Center for Safer Schools, Whole School, Whole Community, Whole Child, Project Aware, and our NCMTSS work. And, and as we are sharing these recommendations, we believe it's important to affirm the importance of all of this work and also the value of developing our common language. We believe that this will help us to better support the work in the field and as we improve our communication and support systems at the state level. So at the November Planning Session, we shared the first recommendation, which is to use North Carolina Multi-Tierred System of Support for scaling up existing and new social and emotional learning and school mental health efforts, because this aligns with the school mental health policy. Although NCMTSS is not required, this framework is already evident in a number of other policies, including Read to Achieve, our specific learning disability policy, and has already referenced the school mental health policy. In addition, NCMTSS is cited as a promising practice in the West Ed Report, and MTSS is indicated as an evidence-based practice in our S of Plan. Second, this aligns with guidance from the federal government, which was shared in our executive summary. And finally, NCMTSS is already established in many districts and charter schools and non-traditional schools across our state. We actually have implementation data on this. This makes explicit connections with North Carolina Multi-Tierred System of Support important as we scale up social, emotional learning and school mental health. This is especially true as we think about supporting our smaller districts and those with less resources. The second recommendation is around your continued commitment to social, emotional learning as a lever for academic success and educational equity, which removes barriers for the field. Social and emotional learning helps create learning opportunities and environments where all individuals can reach their fullest potential. It helps educators to better attune to and appreciate students' developmental needs and unique strengths, build awareness of students' different cultures and backgrounds, and to create classroom environments that are more inclusive of all learners. SEL helps students, families, caregivers, educators, and community partners to build trusting relationships that allow them to have discussions about challenges and come up with solutions together. Finally, social and emotional learning helps young people and adults to better understand and express their views, to listen to and empathize with others who have different viewpoints and experiences, and to talk through those disagreements and conflicts. Typically, when we think about specialized instructional support personnel, we think about four critical roles: school counselors, school nurses, school psychologists, and school social workers. When we shared this recommendation in November, we added a school mental health consultant. Now, we would also add a school safety coordinator to the recommended supplemental instructional support teaming structure. Some of these roles are represented at the state level. However, as discussed in November, both the state school psychologist and the state school mental health consultant are needed. These existing state-level roles have been meeting and will continue to collaborate. This is an example of the inter-agency and cross-agency collaboration necessary for this work. To date, the North Carolina Social Emotional Learning Implementation Team has leveraged Project Aware and some IDA funds. Given the current needs in the field, this funding is not sufficient. Thank you.
Chair Keenan, we turn it back over to you.
Do we have any, any questions or comments by the board members, anyone else in regard to the presentation?
Mr. Chairman, when they all.
When?
The last speaker mentioned, I mean, closing about the funds were not adequate. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir.
When you said that, what kind of funding are you, are you looking at then? In order to make it a validate in the social, emotional learning environment for students? Have you looked at it? The cost? The total?
Well, our specific funding needs include supporting workforce development through building an online training and coaching center for social, emotional learning and school mental health, and also creation of a family and youth engagement specialist position to build state guidance and resources on engaging family and youth in building authentic partnerships with families and caregivers. So those are our funding needs.
So, but you don't have a funding number at this time?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? If not, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to discussion item, and Dr. Taylor, and I think Ms. Karen Fairley is going to deal with that consolidated data report to the General Assembly.
Good afternoon, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, and board members. Today, our Executive Director, Karen Fairley, of the Center for Safer Schools, and I will be presenting the annual consolidated data report. We know this is associated with the statutory requirements found in 115(c) that we compile this data annually and that we report it to the Joint Legislative Educational Oversight Committee. This is tied to our strategic priorities of goal number one, eliminate opportunity gaps by 2025, specifically to decrease the number of exclusionary disciplinary practices by subgroup and decrease the high school dropout rate. Mrs. Fairley will share the first part of this report dealing with the annual school crime and violence, suspension and expulsions, as well as the use of corporal punishment, which we are having to say there is none. And I will do the second portion dealing with disciplinary reasons, alternative assignments and placements, and the dropout rate. She will then come back with lessons learned and next steps, and then we will take any questions that the board may have. So at this time, Mrs. Fairley.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Chairman Davis, Superintendent Truitt, Vice Chair Duncan, and board. Because I am making this presentation for the first time while doing my due diligence to prepare, it was brought to my attention the possible frustration of these numbers being given out annually without possible ways to address areas of concern. So today, my goal is to present the data, listen to your concerns, and then create a plan of action so that when I return before you next year, I will be in a position to report some meaningful progress. Some of the requests that were made at the committee meeting on last week are reflected in this presentation and is being integrated into the actual report for this year. I understand that I may not have answers to some of your questions and/or concerns, but please note that I will work to not only create a plan, but more importantly, implement said plan. In beginning my process, I understand that this is a team effort, and I have already contacted other sections of DPI, such as Healthy Schools and IABS, to name a couple, to help support the Center for Safer Schools effort and move towards progress. As you know, schools in North Carolina begin the 2020-21 academic year by offering either a mixture of blended in-person and remote learning instruction or remote learning-only instruction, which continued throughout that school year. While the data reported within the report covers the full 29, uh, 2019, 20, and 2020-21 academic year, caution should be taken when making comparison to previous years after March 16, 2020, schools closures, and then of the continuation of various school models in 2021. So slide five is the the number of disciplinary incidents reported by month. The total for that July through June is 38,442 disciplinary incidents. Slide six, the number of alternative learning placement reported by month. The total for that July through June period is 5,765 placements. Withdrawal date of dropout by month, the total is 10,091 for that same period. We don't have a breakdown by high, middle, you know, elementary, middle, or high school as it relates to the SRO. That is going to be something difficult. We will attempt to do it. However, because we have a lot of law enforcement departments that will change who the SROs are from various schools, but depending on the needs, that's kind of hard to get a solid number. We will work to get you the best number we can. We are going to start with the SRO grant that we have, and we can identify what numbers we have provided that funding, and we can do it for elementary and middle, because that grant funding does not allow it for high schools. So that's going to be a little more challenging to get. But we're going to work towards that. So the, there was 600 and I'm sorry, did I go past that? So I'm on slide eight. There were 1,535 acts of reportable crimes across the state during 2020, 2021. And that's a rate of 1.04 per thousand students. In 2021, there were 650 reportable crimes associated with public high schools. And then you see the top three reportable acts of crime are possession of a controlled substance, and violation of law, possession of a weapon, and assault on school personnel. And then this is the percentage difference. And again, because of COVID and how kids were in school, this number, you'll see a, a great difference. So on slide 12, I was asked at the committee meeting last week about the consistent numbers of 2016, 17, and 18 as it related to short-term suspension. We will work within the department, the center will work within the department to support programs, resources, and information dissemination that are already in place. An example is the School Mental Health Plan, which requires annual review of discipline policies, practices, and personnels. The, I was asked to, we have quite a few charts, but I was asked to not only have the charts, but then have them broken down by gender and by ethnicity. And so, this one is the one for gender on short-term suspension. The next one is a short-term suspension for, by female, for females. Following is males. And I'm trying to be quick, because I know that everybody wants to. And then the following slide 16 is by ethnicity. Here we have the categories of unacceptable behavior. And of the 19,482 short-term suspensions for 2021, 18,290 or 93.9% were given as a result of an incident involving unacceptable behavior. These are the categories broken up by, the numbers broken up by categories for those unacceptable behaviors. So this is the short-term suspension for unacceptable behaviors broken up by gender and ethnicity. And then this is the rate, the following slide is the rate. Again, broken up by gender and ethnicity. Slide 22, long-term suspensions. In 2020-21, 82 long-term suspensions were reported. The rate of long-term suspensions were 5.58 per 100,000. And I was asked about the reasoning as it relates to ALPs, whether or not, if they have programs, and Dr. Taylor will talk a little bit about that. But there were a lot of categories that were checked for long-term suspension as other. And so, we will be more diligent in trying to see what the reasons are going forward. 23 long-term suspension based on ethnicity. The following one is the rate per 100,000 students. We had 396 removals from homeschool due to long-term suspension or to serve long-term suspension in ALP. And I was asked to break that down as well. And so, the next one is the ALP placement instead of long-term suspension, broken down by gender and ethnicity. And so, as we see, the blackmail has the highest LP placement for that period. Long-term suspension, broken down the number of long-term suspension per 100,000 students on the following slide. There were 431 students who received multiple short-term suspensions that totaled more than 10 days. Broken down by gender and ethnicity, we see that black male and then white male in that order. There were six students expelled in 2020, 2021. I was asked, as it relates to that, did we know the reason? And so, there, four out of the six expulsion was coded as other for their behavior. This sometimes means that they were expelled for something that happened outside of the school, or it was the culmination of everything that has happened over the year. The other two were communicating threat as a primary behavior for the total of six. And in 2020, 2021, there were no reported use of corporal punishments across the state. We are, I was asked to see what districts still have it as policy, even though they may not be utilizing them. And we're in the process of gathering what that is. And I will see if there's any questions on my portion before turning it over to Dr. Taylor.
Any questions?
I did have one question. This is Maureen Stover. So I noticed that on the slide where you had the annual report of suspensions and expulsions for long-term suspensions, that in the native Hawaiian Pacific Islander category, there was a significant drop in the number of students that were receiving long-term suspensions and expulsions. Was wondering if that was attributed, see where it goes from like one hundred in 2016, 17, and then zero in the subsequent years? Is there a promising practice that has emerged out of that? Or is there some kind of reason why we saw that huge decline? Like some type of effective intervention or program that was implemented that helped those students that maybe we could apply across other ethnic groups?
To be quite honest, I don't, I'm not sure. Because I noticed that, that that was a drop. So that is something, as I go through this, I'm looking at those, and then I'm making note of them so that I can follow back up. So I can update the board in something written if that, if that's meaningful to the board, but I don't know.
Thank you so much.
And what I would add to that is anytime we have small numbers, we know that they can be skewed. So you may have used instances, instances of very low, very low numbers, years where you may have more, and then they can be skewed. So we do know that's part of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Keenan, this is Mr. Ford.
Yes, Ford, please.
Appreciate you. So I'm like trying to gather myself here. I appreciate the disclaimer from the outset that, you know, you may not be able to talk as much or get as in-depth as you would like. And I know that for these couple of years, the data themselves are really hard to gather, and you know, there's only so much validity to them. I guess on a positive note, all suspensions are going down, or at least it appears that way, so that's good. What still concerns me is the obvious thing, right? Which is that the, you know, we're about closing opportunity gaps, but the racial gaps are really still very blatantly apparent. If I'm correct, ninety-four percent of the short-term suspensions you said were for UBA offenses, unacceptable behaviors, and not crimes, not reportable crimes, not the big stuff, right?
Right, ninety-three point nine.
Right, so the vast majority, right, of things are unacceptable behaviors, right? So for anybody like that's supposing that these are crime-ridden criminals who are doing, we're talking unacceptable behaviors.
That's correct.
And I look at slide 21, and I see, I mean, I think anybody could see, right? What's obvious there is that even as the overall rates of suspensions are declining, even as the majority of the offenses, ninety-four percent, are unacceptable behaviors, it's black and multiracial males mostly that are being suspended, right? Disproportionately, still. The report has come a long way. The actual report is really, really good. And if, I mean, when I look at the actual report beyond the slides, you, on figure S14, you see what are the unacceptable behaviors that these kids are being suspended for, for black and brown kids? It's defiant behaviors. Can anybody tell me what a defiant behavior? Since it's constituting the vast majority of suspensions, what does that mean?
So I can address that, and we obviously know that most of these issues do with student data and how they're suspended has everything to do with the administrator. And so when we talk about unacceptable behavior, I call that the get out of jail free category for administrators. They can ultimately decide what that may be, and we know that's how these numbers end up being skewed. I think the thing that I do like is when we talk about the NTSS process and the different training that we're doing, we know absolutely that's what's going to make the difference. Everything has to do with the training for both administrators and teachers to, one, recognize what these numbers are, how they may have misunderstandings of what behaviors may be, and how these kids end up in the category. So this is something we've dealt with for decades, I believe, but I know the only way that we're going to make inroads on this is to continue training, help people to understand how kids can't be categorized or identified as something that they may not be. But the numbers speak for themselves. They absolutely do.
I appreciate your candor on that, Dr. Taylor.
And within the short time, we have convened a committee to work on that because definitely I noticed that, and since I got seven black grandsons, that is a concern.
Yeah, and so I guess I'll end just by saying that, again, like I appreciate you, y'all speaking very forthrightly to that, and the catch-all category, right, and how that's used inequitably. And my follow-up question, I think you've answered, but I was going to say, what are we doing about that, right? What are we going to do to hold principals, school leaders accountable to where they can't just use that as a dragnet approach? Because it's inordinately capturing black and brown boys. And as we talk about the very populations we want to serve that are, you know, least served, marginalized, trying to include reading, tried to include reading, we left behind during COVID, it's that same demographic that's being suspended. And so we're exacerbating an already inequitable system if we don't respond to that. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. But unless you had an additional commentary on what we're doing to respond to that.
Yes, and so as you may already know, the Center for Safer Schools has secured funding from the General Assembly to open up a training center specifically for school safety. And so that would be something that would be part of that training curriculum, is to work with schools. And we are gathering administrators so that we're not telling them, they're telling us how they do that and how we can help support them in making different decisions.
Thank you.
And also, a lot of that has to do with partnership that we may have with outside agencies. For example, we know that JCPC, we know that JCPC gives a lot of money to local districts to do things such as day treatment. But we do have instances where those boards begin to ask questions that, we know you're doing day treatment, but we see that the majority of the people being treated are people of color. And so they are asking those questions that, what are you going to do to try and mitigate these kinds of instances? I know that John David, who is the district attorney for the New Hanover region, they, they are doing work to wear specific infractions that students may have that they're not sent through the court system, so they have these things attached to them. And if they don't have attorneys or resources to get that removed from their records, it stays there. So everything has to do with how we create those partnerships with outside agencies and also provide that training to school districts to do the same sort of thing. I think the next portion we were going to talk about was in-school suspensions. And so you'll see, again, those numbers have dropped off to about one seventy. I think it was signed thirty-one, thirty-two. And as Mrs. Fairley has said, we know that everything is associated with the number of students that are not in school, so we know these numbers are going to be low. Again, on the next slide, she has that. The report has it disaggregated both by racial categories and gender as well. I know on slide thirty-five, I think this is when Karen talked about alternative school placements. And again, this number has dropped to one seventy, has everything to do with students not being in school. So we do recognize that. If you continue with that, we also have those categories broken down by race. And on the next slide, it also has the gender. On slide thirty-eight, I do want to bring particular attention to this. You will see that we have the number of alternative school placements. There were five thousand seven hundred and sixty-five student placements, but you also see that there were five thousand five hundred and forty-eight unique individual placements. What that actually means is that you had two hundred and seventeen instances where a kid could have actually been sent to alternative more than once. So that's, that's why you see that difference in those particular numbers. And again, those numbers are also disaggregated by the racial categories as well as gender, male and female. Same for slide number forty-one. If we go to slide forty-two, this is where we talk about dropout percentages. Again, we do know that these numbers have everything to do with kids that were not in school. You see that there's a slight uptick to one point nine four. In the school district, we know that at the end of the school year, in May of 2020, many students across the country, I don't want to say they were given passes, but we understood that kids were not in school, and so we took extraordinary measures to make sure students were able to matriculate. So obviously, anybody who was a senior had that opportunity to be able to graduate. Anyone that may have been below that, once they came back to the school that subsequent year, if that was not the proper kind of engagement, then we're going to see those numbers actually go back up. So if you go to the next slide, it will actually talk about the reasons for dropout. And you'll see, I don't know if you can see that color, that may be orange-red, but it does talk about student engagements. So we do recognize that if those kids didn't have the opportunity to matriculate, and if we didn't have the proper engagement with them once they returned, then those numbers were going to go back up. That, that one point nine four, even though that's a slight uptick. Deanna, if you could go back one slide for a moment. You see that in the 2018, 2019 year, it was about two point zero one. And so the 2021 year, which is one point nine four, that does continue that downward trend of the dropout rate. And so we obviously recognize that that one particular year had those skewed numbers, but we think we're still on track of making sure kids are not dropping out of school. And I think that is essentially, all of those other numbers are broken down by both the racial group as well as gender, male and female. I do want to bring particular attention, do go back, Deanna, to here, there. So we see there's a large number of Hispanic students that do drop out. I think we all traditionally know that when older students of the Hispanic population come in as immigrants, once they reach the age where they can drop out and work, that is one of the problems we've dealt with continually, so that's why you do see those high numbers there. But with that, Ms. Fairley, I'll let you talk about, I guess, our recommendations, next steps, lessons learned. We'll talk about that together. Well, I'm sorry, are there any questions with that section before we get to that?
Mr. Hall, I have a question, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Keenan.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I was hoping that this report would have disaggregated by gender, race, ethnicity, like offenses, so we can compare like to like. Is it possible, but it seems like what you're telling me is that that's going to be very hard when it comes to unacceptable behaviors because it's defined broadly and varies from district to district. So I would like to propose that the Center for Safer Schools do some sort of pilot or informal study in a large district to see, to be able to break this down so that we know how, I would assume, Dr. Taylor, that even though unacceptable behaviors vary district to district, there has to be some definition in a particular district for that, right? It's, it's in writing someplace?
Yeah, each district is going to have their student code of conduct. What we can do is, in the discipline system where they have to put that data in, we can have that category further delineated. In other words, if we say unacceptable behavior, we can come up with one, two, five, seven categories, whatever we may choose. Ultimately, there will probably be another category, but we can certainly identify the kinds of unacceptable behavior we want to capture, and that'll give us more.
And then compare them proportionally to
Absolutely.
black students, Hispanic students, white students, boys and girls.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments?
Mr. Keenan, could I just add, could I just add one comment to that? I think when doing that, you also have to try to add, in order to get a complete picture, what the length of the suspension is for like offenses. And that's a critical component to evaluating the data.
Absolutely.
And while I have Ford just for one, I want to thank Ms. Fairley for the work that she's been doing. Mr. Keenan and I added several things to her plate ten days ago, and she's been extremely responsive to try to get additional information to the board and also extremely straightforward with us in terms of what can and cannot be done right now. And I really appreciate the work she's done on this.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
This is Jeff Windell.
Yes, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, sir. I just have a quick question for Mr. Taylor, I think it is. And I always have a problem with this. These numbers that I'm seeing, are they duplicated counts in some respects?
In what sense when you say duplicated?
One, one, one person falls in four different categories.
That, that is a possibility.
That would make it skewed. That would make it look a little bit different, though, if that was the case.
What was the last comment?
I said if they, if they are, if there are cases of duplicated count, it would change the, the landscape, would it not?
Absolutely. Anytime you have Yeah, a situation where the count is duplicated, or they may be in multiple categories, it could lead to a misunderstanding of the data. You're absolutely right.
That, that is correct. Now, with that understood, and I know it's difficult, is there a way to make sure that these are unduplicated counts?
Yeah, that'll have everything to do with the system where the data is put in, when they input that information into power schools.
Yes.
We'd have to work with the technology department to make sure we address any issues with data duplication and how we can avoid that. It has everything to do with the system that's used to collect the data.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Any other comments before we close out?
I have a, this is Lieutenant Governor Robinson. I have a question.
Okay, Lieutenant.
Yeah, to forgive me, I'm trying to do two things at once here, so I may have missed this. But are there specific conversations going on with black teachers and black principals or Latino, black and brown teachers and principals about those numbers?
Well, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, what I would say is that we have conversations with the entire faculty and staff. That is the encouragement.
That's, that's not what I asked. I asked, are there specific conversations going on with black and brown principals and teachers about those numbers and why they exist?
I can't say that there are any specific conversations with any particular group. I know that with the Center for Safer Schools, we look at these numbers holistically, but if individual districts are doing that, we'd have to collect information from them as well or not.
Because we're separating these children out by black and brown and wondering why so many are being suspended for certain things. But are we having conversations with the black and brown teachers and principals who may be recommending these suspensions? Because I can tell you now that I have, I've had conversations with black teachers across the state who are telling me that they have a problem sometimes with their black students, and they are saying that it is a problem. And if it is, and if they think it is, then maybe we need to get up to the bottom of it to get to the root of it. Instead of trying to fix the system, maybe we need to start looking at some of the, some of the folks who are coming into the system and some of those behaviors that are happening. And I'm not saying this to try to browbeat anybody or to try to be disagreeable, but I think we're coming at this thing completely wrong because what I've heard, in my experience and my capacity as Lieutenant Governor, from teachers across this state is a totally different story. And since we're separating these kids by race, why are we not specifically talking to the black and brown principals who are in these schools, who see it every day, and ask them exactly what is the issue? I just don't understand, if we're not doing that, why we're not doing it?
Lieutenant Governor Robinson, my response would be is that we'd have to collect the data and not necessarily deal with general conversations or individual instances of where this happens because we do know that does happen. The data would have to tell us who is making the referrals. Is that a large number of referrals by teachers of color? Is that a large number of referrals by Caucasian faculty and staff? I get your point, and I think you're absolutely spot-on point about looking at what the data says about who's making the referrals. And then I think that gives us the opportunity to further drill down about where we need to put specific PD about how teachers of color, non-teachers of color, how they deal with these kind of discipline issues. And I think Mrs. Fairley had something she wanted to share with me.
Yes, Lieutenant Governor. And so one of the things that I am moving forward with rapid speed is to start training schools as it relates to behavioral assessment training. We have our first training scheduled for the twenty-third of February. And so that is where we are going to identify And so that is where we are going to identify whatever challenges that particular child has as it relates to behavior and try to work with, whether it's whole child, whatever, to try to get the children the help that they need. No, I have not even thought that we're going to do it specifically to black or brown, but more specifically just to schools where we see there is a higher rate and start from there. So we're trying to do it as quickly as we can, and we'll start in February, and hopefully next year when we see this, we'll have some of those questions answered.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Chair, that concludes HRS Committee presentation.
Do you want to do the last slide?
Oh.
I think they've got a little more, Mr. Keenan.
Yes, yes. Okay. So anyways, lesson learned. So again, we'll continue, you know, the center will continue to work with our internal partners at DPI, and also we have created teams outside of DPI with local law enforcement, school administrators, school counselors associations, so that we can work towards helping with some of the reductions in some of these numbers. When I was preparing this presentation, it was said last year that we were going to perform quarterly data reviews to assess trends earlier, and that did not happen because I did not realize it until I was preparing this one. So moving forward, we will look to do that, and so we'll move as quickly as possible to get what we can thus far and do that. That's pretty much it, unless anyone has any additional questions.
I think we're good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
Thanks, I appreciate you, Ms. Chair.
We'll now proceed to the Education Innovation and Charter Schools Committee led by Ms. Amy White.
Thank you, Chair Davis. Good afternoon, everyone. I felt like we should call and have a seven second, seven bending stretch for the day that we've had so far. I'll take a point of personal privilege and just highlight the fact that citizens across the great state of North Carolina had the opportunity to celebrate National School Choice Week. As the Chair of the Education Innovation and Charter School Committee, it's been my incredible pleasure to work with the Office of Charter Schools, one of the many areas of school choice offered in our state. There are over 200 charter schools in the state of North Carolina, and over the past two years, COVID-19 has certainly highlighted the demand for more options for high-quality instructional delivery in the state of North Carolina. The John Locke Foundation provided some numbers for school choice, and I just wanted to point out a couple of those to you. So in the state of North Carolina, there are 1,431,321 students attending traditional public charter, public schools in 2020, '21. 416,000 of those students attended a school of choice. It could have been a charter school, could have been a private school, or it may have been a homeschool last year. 179, almost 180,000 students enrolled in North Carolina homeschools. 19,401 students exercised the Opportunity Scholarship to attend a school of their choice. It should be no surprise to you after five years of leading this committee that I highly favor the idea that parents and families should have the right to exercise the choice of making the decision about which school is the best fit for their child. In the past year, we've seen parents that wanted their children to attend in-person schooling. We've seen parents that wanted their children to have the opportunity to learn at home during the pandemic. Parent choices here and the demands of parent's choices bleeding over into the offerings that we as a state are able to afford our parents and students as we propel our students to be prepared to enter the workforce after graduation. Today, we have an exciting agenda. Jill Camnitz and I had the opportunity to do the committee work last week, and we're excited for the EICS I item, and I'd like to welcome Dr. Laura Billrow-Berry, who is going to present to us the Board of Governors Subcommittee Recommendation on a New Lab School at Appalachian State. Welcome, Dr. Billrow-Berry.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about our schools of choice. We just want to thank everyone here at the department. We could not have opened our current schools and the ones that are coming and operate them without the support of the department. Every division, I think, has had some interaction with our lab schools, and we certainly, I especially want to thank Dr. Jordan, where our laboratory schools are housed within the department. As you may know, we are charged within the UNC system to open nine laboratory schools by 2022, and so we currently have six. I'm going to give you a little bit of background on those current schools, but then also mention our new school that we have coming forward for you to consider today. As a part of the legislation, there are three components. Our most important is to offer students who we consider striving learners, unique opportunities within our university-run lab schools. The other two pieces are looking at teacher and principal preparation, and so our laboratory schools serve as an area where our candidates can go and see unique and innovative opportunities that are happening in those classrooms. In addition to that, just teacher preparation and principal preparation, we have a lot of education-adjacent interaction within our schools. So that means if we have counselor interns, school psychologist interns, speech pathologists, other therapeutic areas such as social work and other opportunities, those are also integrated into our schools. So our process is that the Board of Governors receives a request from our universities to open a lab school. They vote on a resolution, which you have within your materials. Those come to you all for the official creation of the school. To recap on where we have come in five years, in 2017, we opened two schools. East Carolina University opened the ECU Community School. It is co-located at South Greenville Elementary School in Pitt County and serves grades K through 5. Now, I had the opportunity to help open a ECU's Community School, and I can tell you, it's great to see their progress over the past five years. In addition to that, Western Carolina University opened the Catamount School. They are co-located in Jackson County at Smoky Mountain High School. They are our only exclusive middle school, and so that's a different environment, and we're very gracious for them embarking on the middle grade years. Both of these schools, this is their fifth year of operation, they've recently been approved by our Subcommittee to operate another five years, and they'll be considered again. In year two, in 2018, we had three schools that opened. Appalachian State University opened the Appalachian State Academy at Middle Fork, which is in Forsyth County, and they serve grades K through 5. Also that year, UNC Wilmington opened DC Virgo's Preparatory Academy, which is our only K8 school, and that's in New Hanover County. Also, within Rockingham County, UNC Greensboro opened Moss Street Partnership School. They're also an elementary school with grades K through 5. Our most recent school, which started at the beginning of the pandemic, as you can imagine, opening a new school in a pandemic is a challenge, UNC Charlotte embarked upon their journey in opening Niner University Elementary in Mecklenburg County, and they are currently serving grades K through 3. I would like to note that all of our schools, one of the advantages of being associated with universities is that the resources and expertise within the universities can be leveraged at the lab schools, not only to enhance their academic experience, but also those important social, emotional, and physical well-being issues that our students face on a day-to-day basis. So it's not uncommon to see nursing students doing screenings within our schools, dental students, we have social workers that are learning to be social workers, we have lots of interactions from community members, and so it's really, I think it's been interesting to hear kind of about MTSS, about serving the whole child, and that is really what our goal is within our laboratory schools. But today I bring to you Appalachian State. They are the mountaineers, but they're also pioneers because they are our only university that will be embarking on opening not one, but two schools. We are quite pleased that our friends at Elkin City Schools have agreed to be partners with Appalachian State to open the Appalachian State Academy at Elkin. This school will be co-located at Elkin Elementary and will serve about 100 students in grades 2 through 4. So in addition to that, we hope to have next month, bring to you North Carolina A&amp;T. They are looking to open the Aggie Academy. Right now, they're in negotiations with Guilford County Schools. They're looking to operate grades 3 through 5. They're almost close to having their location on their campus. Their heavy steam emphasis with this new school will leverage the wonderful opportunities at North Carolina A&amp;T. We hope we'll have a successful support and vote from Guilford County Schools so that we can bring this resolution to you in the future. In addition to that, UNC Chapel Hill, they are seeking a school system partner. They have asked several, and they're moving on to their next partner, and they're hoping to have that to us very soon. Their school will be named the Carolina Community Academy, and they will serve grades K through 2. I would like to say that this endeavor, it is a pleasure to be able to work with the laboratory schools, to be able to see new ways and innovative ways to offer instruction to students who are striving learners, and so I'll entertain any questions.
Questions from my friends around the board table. Superintendent Truitt.
Thank you, Dr. Billrow-Berry. You know, the first time I heard your name, which your last name has always stood out to me, was when you were working on the lab school at ECU years ago, and what I remember is how everyone was so excited about your involvement in that endeavor and how, I mean, everyone was so scared of that legislation, and oh my gosh, how are we going to implement all these lab schools? And you did it, and so thank you for that. My question is, lab schools, how are they similar to charter schools in governance and in funding, if at all?
Good question. We do share the flexibility with, as do charters. Our funding is similar in that we receive ADM from local, state, and federal funds, if that's applicable. We also have an appropriation from the General Assembly that supports our schools as well. And in terms of governance, the governing body of the, all of the lab schools is the Board of Governors Subcommittee on Laboratory Schools.
Yes.
At the universities, the chancellor is the governing authority. Often, that is the designee of the dean of the College of Education, but there is an advisory board, which is comprised of, of course, university individuals, but then also the school system partners. This doesn't work unless we have really strong school system partners, and so that advisory group counsels the chancellor in terms of making decisions about the individual schools.
A follow-up to that? Sure. So that strikes me as very interesting because it would seem then that it would follow the same tension that exists between charter schools and their neighborhood public schools, yet I haven't heard anything about that, and that's, take that for what it's worth. But so do our public, our neighborhood public schools see our lab schools as competition for their students?
Well, I think that it depends on who you ask. I think in going into the agreements with the universities, the partnership, there's a lot of conversation that happens, and there's a lot of negotiation. And I think when it comes down to it, the thought is what's best for children. Our school system, there are children who have not had success, and so this is an opportunity for a unique situation. It is a school of choice, parents have to apply to go, you know, we don't make anybody go, but I think it's one of those things where there has to be that focus on students and making sure that universities have great resources, lots of resources, lots of expertise that a public school system may not have access to. And so those are leveraged in order to provide a really good experience for students.
Well, as a supporter of school choice, I'm incredibly excited about Aggie Academy. I can't wait to hear updates. Thank you.
Superintendent Truitt and board members, one of the other things that Ms. Camnitz and I asked for in our conversation with Dr. Billrow-Berry was that we would like to have a report given to the board about innovative practices that have been generated out of the lab schools so that we can begin to cultivate and then replicate, if at all possible, some of these things that we're seeing. And so she has agreed to do that at a later point, but it is time, with the first school having come on board in 2017, that we should have some idea of what's, what are some positive outcomes that have come from all of your hard work? Yes? Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much
Great, thank you very much.
For us today. We're excited, too. Hopefully you'll have some more, you'll be back next month. Okay, EICS II is the 2022 Charter School Enrollment and Expansion Requests. You did have the chance to hear this presentation last month, I'm sure Mr. Machado will be glad to come back up to the table, and Ms. Turner is on the call, I do believe. Is that correct?
Yes, she is.
Okay, if anyone has questions. Mr. Machado, anything new that you want to bring to our attention?
Yes, there was some question at the last meeting. I think Mr. Duncan asked me about the rollout of the Kip Durham School in Durham, what they were going to do and what their numbers were going to be when they were finally built out, and I have that information. I actually misspoke just a tad about what their numbers are going to be. So currently, they are five, fifth through eighth grade with 358 students. They're asking for next year to be K1 and 6/8 with 510 students. The following year, they would be K2, 6/8, 610 students. Following year, K3, 6/8, 710. Following year, 6/4, 6/8, 810, and then when they're totally built out in 2026, '27, that will be a K8 school with 900 students. That is the only clarification from the discussion last month.
Yes, they changed their model and their building from the bottom up, hoping to grow to K.
And the fact that they are not starting at fifth grade, they will not be displacing any students because they currently don't have any fourth graders to rise into the fifth grade.
Questions about the 2022 Charter School Enrollment and Expansion Requests? Excellent. Moving to our discussion items, EICS IIIA III is Unity Classical Academy's request to expand its enrollment. Mr. Machado.
Thank you. This school is located in Mecklenburg County. It opened in 2018. They are currently serving kindergarten through sixth grade, 359 students. They are approved to be a K8 school. Their, the last grading that were obviously public grades, they were a C school and exceeded growth. They are allowed to increase 467 students. They are requesting to increase to 600. That's 133 students above the allowed growth, because they are allowed, obviously, to grow up to 30%. You are allowed to approve this if a school is in a construction mode or period, and they are, they have just completed a brand-new billing that they just moved into in February. They have secured the financing, which is another requirement, and they have just currently moved into it, and they will be K8, 912 students when they're all built out in school year 2025, '26. And I was just talking to one of the board members yesterday, and they have received over 600 applications for these spots.
Questions about this enrollment, yes, expansion request? All right, that'll be back before us, before action next month. The highlight of the day is EICS IV, our 2022 Charter School Renewal Recommendations. Board members, when you arrived this morning, you had several little treats by your desk. I will call your attention to the
I will call your attention to those. The first sheet of paper is the North Carolina General Statute 115C-218.5 and 218.6. This talks you through and reminds you of some, the initial charter periods and whether it exceeds 10 years. And so it gives you the outlines that the charter school reasons for not providing that 10-year renewal. Then you find a chart for general renewal guidelines outlining 10 years, seven years, five years, three years, and non-renewals. So those, you can keep handy as you look at the third attachment that we provided for you, which are the requirements for renewal, followed up at the back of your packet with an outline of all the schools that are before you for approval. And it groups them by recommended years of approval and then it collects the data in an Excel format, explaining the recommendation, some general school information, any special notes, whether the school is compliant, if there's comparative data there that suggests whether or not it's comparative to the school district or not. So this is basically a, to use the word of the day, truncated version of what appears in long form on the amazing presentation put together by Dr. Cooper and her team. I'm going to quit talking. Dr. Machado.
Mr. Machado.
Yes, you can always be Dr. in my book.
Just a quick overview before Dr. Cooper goes through the presentation. We currently have 27 schools that are up for renewal. Nine of them meet the statutory requirement for a 10-year renewal. Four are being recommended for a seven-year. Twelve are being recommended for a three-year renewal. And we have two that are being recommended for non-renewal. So, Dr. Cooper?
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for your time today. I try to be succinct and accurate as we go through the report. As stated before, thank you again for getting those handed out. You do have general statute in front of you to refer to, as well as the guidelines that are utilized for the Charter School Advisory Board to place schools within recommendations to submit to you. All right, so the 10-year schools that we've presented this year for recommendation are straight down the statutory line. This means that those schools have met the academic requirement, as well as the fact that they are comparable to the LEA in which they serve, but they're also in good financial standing. So if, I'll go down that list. The first school we had is Beargrass. And Beargrass Charter is located in Williamson, North Carolina. They serve, they are approved and currently serve grades six through 12. They are a B school that exceeded growth in the last year that we have data for and they are upwards of 27.3 points of the LEA. Our next school is Cornerstone Charter Academy School. They are located in Greensboro, North Carolina. They are a B school that has exceeded growth and they are upwards of 21.1 points of the LEA. Corvian Community School, and please feel free to slow me down if I'm going too fast. I do know that we have time to consider. Corvian Community School is a B school that met growth and they are upwards of 15.7 points of the LEA. Northeast Carolina Preparatory Academy is located in Tarboro, North Carolina. They are a C school that met growth and they are upwards of 6.7 points of the LEA.
Can I ask just a question for clarification? When you say they met growth, some of these schools didn't appear to meet growth all three years. So when you say met growth, what is your definition of met growth in this context?
So based on the guidelines, they either have to meet or exceed growth in the immediately preceding three years. And so looking at, let's just take Northeast Carolina Prep, for example. They exceeded one year, but they met for two years. So, and with their comparability being what it is to the LEA, that qualified them for 10-year, based on what we require statutorily for 10-year schools.
I guess going back to Beargrass, growth was not met one of those three years, but...
Yes, so the, so the other half of that is if they are comparable to the school for those three preceding years and they are outperforming the LEA with above 20 points. 15.2 points the first year, 20.9 points the second year, and then 27.3 points the third year.
Okay, but when you say met growth, your intention is that it met growth for all three years?
Yes. We would hope they met or exceeded growth for all three of the most preceding three years.
Thank you. Those definitions.
Okay. Did we stop at Phoenix Academy? Phoenix Academy is located in High Point, North Carolina. They are a grade B school and they exceeded growth in their last year of data and they are upwards of 16.7 points of the LEA. Research Triangle High School is located in Durham, North Carolina. I did provide additional information on Research Triangle High School that we did, we found an accountability issue and we have, the school has addressed that. The accountability department has also, and our office has done so as well. But we wanted to make sure that we provided all of the information for your discussion to ensure that you had every detail to the school. That was not closed out until after we had the vote for renewal recommendations. But they are a B school and they are upwards of 24.8 points of the LEA of Durham County. Stars Charter is a B school. They exceeded growth and they are upwards of 16.7 points of the LEA. The Academy of Moore County is located in Aberdeen, North Carolina. They are a grade A school. They met growth and they are 29.0 points above the LEA. Triangle Math and Science Academy is located in Cary, North Carolina. They are a grade A school. They met growth and they are upwards of 23.3 points of the LEA.
Okay. Let's just pause right there. So those are the schools in those, in this cohort that have been recommended for the 10-year renewal. Do we want to pause? And I'll just offer you the opportunity to ask any particular questions about those schools that have been recommended for 10 years?
I'd just say, all of these schools appear to meet the criteria as set out by the general renewal guidelines. In the past, had some questions about, it appeared we were fudging on those guidelines, but these, without fudging, do not.
Yes, sir.
They meet the qualifications. But I have a couple of questions. One is on the Research Triangle High School.
Okay.
Has that gone back to CSAP for clearance in light of the fact that was a development that arose after the CSAP consideration?
Yes, sir. So unfortunately, timing was not good for that situation because we had already had the meeting to send the recommendations forward to State Board of Ed. But we wanted to make sure that in full transparency, that information was on the table for discussion because there was not meeting time between our last meeting in which we sent this forward and the meeting today.
So CSAP is not considered since the, since the final, I'm trying to understand your answer.
Yes, you can, sure. But the information's provided, but we did not have an opportunity to come back to the table for Charter School Advisory Board to make any kind of adjustments or discussion around that.
Will they discuss it when they meet this, in February? So, do you want to take that?
We are, we were not planning on taking it back to CSAP unless State Board asks us to. This was an issue that the, that the school had a testing irregularity and it was corrected and to the satisfaction of the Accountability Division. There's an action plan to make sure it doesn't happen again that was originated by the school. Obviously, there's a stakeholder that's upset that our office did not conclude the investigation in time before we took it to CSAP. But we treated this as any other investigation and we found that this did not warrant any type of non-compliance. The fact that the school owned, what happened is they did not get their ACT test scores back, the ACT in time. The school owned it. The school put a action plan to make sure this never happened again. And obviously, I could talk about some more issues in closed session if I needed to. We, to answer your question, we are not, Ms. Camnitz, it's not our intention to take it back to CSAP unless you're interrupting us to.
While we've got a pause, I will mention to board members in the documents that are provided for you on Eboard, a lot of times we just focus on what we know is going to be the PowerPoint, but there is another PowerPoint that has information, slides about each school that gives you a little bit further in-depth glance that OCS put some time into pulling together for you. So I encourage you to look at those slides that go along with these materials here. All right, Dr. Cooper.
All right, so we will move into our seven-year schools unless there are any further questions. Okay. College Preparatory and Leadership Academy has been recommended for a seven-year renewal. They are located in Jamestown, North Carolina. They are currently a grade D. And they are at a deficit of 7.1 points of the LEA. This school during interviews, so the second part, the first meeting we have is to introduce the schools. On the second meeting, we allow schools that are not being recommended for a 10-year renewal to have an opportunity to come before the board and discuss their individual subgroup data or any other information that may weigh into the decision. During their interview, College Preparatory and Leadership Academy was able to show that the subgroup data they were providing for the students that they serve, they have an underserved population that they do serve, and they are outperforming the LEA by quite a bit. And so for that reason, the Charter School Advisory Board felt that recommending them for a seven-year charter renewal would be appropriate. They are not deemed as continually low performing, so therefore that leeway was there. Emma Row Bladen is located in Elizabethtown, North Carolina. They are a C school and they are upwards of 10 points of the LEA, 10.7 points of the LEA, and they did meet growth. Guilford Preparatory Academy has been recommended for a seven-year renewal. They are located in Greensboro, North Carolina. They are a grade C school that exceeded growth and they are within their comps because that's five points up or down, but they are at a deficit of 3.7 points. And last but not least, in our seven-year category, we have Waters Edge Village School. Just as a reminder, Waters Edge is a school that was approved with special conditions because of their location. They are in Corallo, North Carolina. And if you know where that is, you can literally like drive your car like right into the water. It's beautiful there. But they have a very small population. Their enrollment is 44. Due to the size of their school, we were not able to provide you any growth information and that could have very well been the reason that they did not qualify for 10 because they either had to be within the comps for three years or show that they exceeded growth. Based on their numbers, they're doing extremely well, but for that reason, they were given a seven-year renewal because we tried to stick extremely close to the guidelines and to the recommendations, the requirements. But they are upwards of 18 points of their LEA and the year before that, 12.6 points of their LEA. So I did say that I would inform you of those special conditions. And that's the last seven-year school. Are there any other? Keep going. So we have Ace Academy. They have been recommended for a three-year renewal and they are continually low performing. They are at a negative 22.3% or points of the LEA and they are currently a grade D school. Carter Community Charter is being recommended for a three-year. They're located in Durham, North Carolina. They are currently a grade D. They did meet growth. They are at a deficit of 11.6 points. Charlotte Secondary Charter is located in Charlotte, North Carolina. They are a grade C, met growth. They are at a deficit of 18.2 points. Dillard Academy has been recommended for a three-year renewal. They are located in Goldsboro, North Carolina. They are a grade D school. They met growth and they are at a deficit of 9.6 points. Two years prior, they were a deficit of 28.1 percentage points. As you can see, the school is definitely trying to turn things around. Discovery Charter School, this is a special situation where this school had a two-year delay and they have no data. They're not in the three-year category because of any issues. They're financially sound. Academically, they're very sound, but they don't have anything to represent them. Hollowasponi Tribal School has been recommended for a three-year renewal. They are located in Hollister, North Carolina. They are currently a grade D school that met growth at a deficit of 13.2%. Johnston Charter Academy is another special situation, a school that had a one-year delay. They only have one year of data and they too have no financial issues or compliance issues. Lakeside Charter Academy has been recommended for a three-year charter agreement. They're located in Cornelius, North Carolina. They are a grade D. They are at a deficit of 3.5. Reaching All Minds Charter Academy has been recommended for a three-year renewal. They are in Durham, North Carolina. It's a great, they are a grade F school that met growth. They are at a deficit of 18.7 to the LEA. United Community School is currently a C school that exceeded growth. They are located in Charlotte, North Carolina, but they are under the continually low performing label that they've had for the last three years. And that would end our three-year and we will now go into our non-renewal category unless there are questions.
Questions about our three-years? Yes, Ms. Camnitz?
One just come on and I don't know what, I'm a little puzzled on Charlotte Secondary because it doesn't seem to meet the guidelines, unless I'm reading something wrong.
Charlotte Secondary is a three-year recommendation?
Mm-hmm, and I see comfortable to local school administrate, administrating at least one year, which is none of those years, and then growth two out of three, but there's only one year, of course.
Yes, ma'am. And so the only other option that we would have would have been to put them in a non-renewal category. And without having data that's more up-to-date, it's, it's almost, I mean, we're kind of in a hard spot because we cannot reward them, but we also can't penalize for what we don't know. So it's just, it was, it can be difficult in the three-year category, but that's not an excuse. It just, that's just the facts. We don't have anything further to go on to move them into a non-renewal position or category.
Not to editorialize, but, but I would say for all of the school, majority of the schools in the three-year category, the lack of data exacerbates the difficulty of the position in making a, making a quality decision because there's lack of qualitative data to make an evaluation.
That's correct.
As is the case for every other school in the state of North Carolina. So the charter schools aren't singled out. It's just the difficulty of saying, we just really can't tell you what happened because we don't have the data to push us to the positive or the negative.
Yes, thank you for that clarity. Ms. Turner, I know you're on the line. Is there anything that you would like to add or?
I'd be more than willing to answer any questions about our thinking on any of those if anyone has any.
Thank you. So are we ready to move into the non-renewal category?
I think so. I think so, not seeing any other questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hopefully I answered your question.
I did, now I'm recalling the conversation in the.
Okay, thank you. So going into the non-renewal category, as you can see, a non-renewal school has current compliance issues, two out of three years, academic outcomes are not comparable, recurring low-performance D or F schools. And so the first school that we present is Three Rivers. And if you recall, Three Rivers is an assumption school, so this was their first term. They are located in Windsor, North Carolina, and they are currently an F school with a deficit of 38 points to the LEA, and their overall comprehension is 8%. Any questions? The next school is Uproar Leadership Academy. They, they're located in Charlotte, North Carolina. This was their first five-year term, and they are at a deficit of 51.8 points of the LEA, and they also have a GLP of 8%. So as you can see, these are our reasons for non-renewal, or the reasons that these schools fill into the non-renewal category. Available for questions, and Ms. Turner or Mr. Machado?
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Ms. Turner, thank you for your time today as well, joining us on the call. Questions about this presentation? Highly encourage you to take advantage of the materials that have been presented. Reach out to any of those individuals with questions, if you ever want about a particular school. I just also wanted to highlight the work of the Charter School Advisory Board Committee. If that group of professionals did not gather to review applications, interview applicants, discuss as a whole before those recommendations ever came to us, that would be the work of this board. And so those folks are highly qualified to do what they do because they are, first of all, they're advocates of school choice. Second of all, they, they have played some role in the, in the charter school. They're either currently on board at a charter school or have had some sort of professional expertise that they bring to the table. And then thirdly, I would say in the, since the years that I have served in this capacity, I have seen a movement to what I'm going to call a critical friend. And by that, there has been an increase in the level of scrutiny, increase in the level of review, and an increase in the standards that are required for charter schools, not only to receive an application by the state of North Carolina, but also the manner in which they're reviewed for renewal. So thank you to those folks who serve on that committee to get to this point for us for our review, and of course, our staff.
Thank you for your time.
EICS V is our report to the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee on our virtual charter school enrollment, and I believe Ashley Baccaro is going to take lead on that. Welcome, Ms. Baccaro.
Hello, how are you? All right, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ashley Baccaro with the Office of Charter Schools, and I am presenting the interim report on virtual charter school enrollment. So as most of you are aware, it's been a bit of a legislative roller coaster when we're talking about the two virtual charter schools. The pilot began in 2015, and it was originally slated for a four-year pilot program. There are two charter schools in the virtual charter school pilot program. There is North Carolina Cyber Academy, which was previously North Carolina Connections Academy, and there is North Carolina Virtual Academy. The four-year pilot has been extended for four additional years, and it is slated to conclude at the end of next school year, the 2223 school year. The original enrollment cap for these two schools was 2,592 for both of the, the virtual schools. And as part of COVID legislation in 2020, the school, the schools were given expansion allotments, so Cyber Academy was allowed to increase enrollment by 1,000 students and North Carolina Virtual Academy by 2,800 students. The following year, there was additional coronavirus-related legislation that gave the expansion another year. So for the 2020 school year and the current 2122 school year, this expansion has been allowed over the 2,592 cap. There is also a reporting requirement, which is what I am presenting to you today. In the report and the schools in general, they speak of these students as expansion students because these are students that were allowed over the original cap. Yeah, you can leave it right there, Diana. So if we look at the two schools, we have North Carolina Cyber, they enrolled 931 students above the cap. North Carolina Virtual enrolled 847 above the cap, and you can see here just the breakdown of what different grade levels those students enrolled in. Nearly every North Carolina county was accounted for in terms of where the students previously attended school. If we look at their previous school environments, both schools enrolled the majority of their new students coming from traditional brick-and-mortar public schools. But you can see there's a few differences. For example, North Carolina Cyber enrolled more students that came previously from a charter school or from Virtual Academy. If we look at the ethnicity of the expansion students, they're, they're fairly aligned in terms of similarities between the two schools. There's nothing that really jumps out as a major difference between the two schools. Looking at their economically disadvantaged populations, North Carolina Cyber enrolled over 58% of their students, their expansion students qualified for free or reduced lunch. And for North Carolina Virtual Academy, that was about 45% qualifying for free or reduced lunch. Looking at academics, so this is just for this current school year. So we have the fall semester that we have data from, both of the schools participate in North Carolina check-ins. And looking at this, this data, the one thing that's, we kind of see, we have seen as a pattern with the, the virtual schools is just a greater challenge with teaching math virtually, which I think traditional brick-and-mortar schools have also recognized when they were forced to go virtual during the pandemic. Both of the schools have plans in place to try to increase the, the math proficiency, but as you can see from this data here, that the students definitely are struggling more in that subject area. If we look at North Carolina Virtual Academy, it's the, it's similar results in terms of a lower average score in math as opposed to the reading, North Carolina check-in data. And then finally, the, the General Assembly asked that we report on withdrawal data, and the two schools are also pretty close in terms of their enroll, or their withdrawal percentages, with both of them between 10 and 11% of their students withdrawing. Most of the student, students withdraw within just maybe a dozen or so days after enrolling, and in talking to both the schools, it's usually because the students or the families realize that it's just not a, a good fit for what their child needs. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Baccaro. Let's see, Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brief question, are these schools, these two, are they subjected to our traditional SPG school, student, uh, school performance grade metrics? Or is it a totally different boarding framework?
No, they are, they receive the same, the same type of accountability data. So just like the, the former schools you saw, they, the last, you know, accountability data that we have from the state that we, we can use would be the 201819, and they are both continually low-performing schools, based on that data.
So what grades do they, what grades do they both receive?
I believe they are both D schools.
And in terms of growth, did they, did either of them meet growth?
I would have to look, I would have to look that up, but I, I do not believe so because, like I said, I do know they are sale, they are continually low-performing, so I believe they are both not met and a D proficiency grade.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
And you, I will say, we, we can provide their data sheets. I will also say that this board will receive a, an in-depth report on both of these virtual charter schools in November of this year. That was in the legislation in terms of the original pilot and with, you know, is a much more in-depth report. And as of this point, we don't, you know, we don't know what is legislatively, if the pilot is going to continue, if it's going to become, kind of rolled into our normal portfolio at, at DPI in the charter school world. But I do know that we currently have on slate a November report for you.
Thank you, Ms. Baccaro. Comments or questions from advisors or anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to our next item. That is EICS VI, and it's our restart application submission from Pitt County Schools. Ms. Garber, welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, board members, nice to see you. My name is Julie Garber, I work for District and Regional Support, and I'm here simply to present to you the restart application from Pitt County. And so just to connect you always to your state board goals, we have our objective here, your, where we align with you in terms of your goals, and of course, restart schools are being tracked by their subgroup growth as well as their overall growth. So we will continue to look at this school if it should be approved. So again, to align you, we are currently at 152 restart schools across the state. And this would be an application that comes directly from Pitt County. And as we look at their application, it is of course looked at as far as eligibility, and so it is of course recurring low performing, which is the requirement, so it is an RLP for short, Recurring Low Performing School. They are requesting implementation during the 2223 school year, and if approved, it would be school number five within Pitt County. From my experience, and also tying back to what you saw in January, the connection with the Union County presentation, I can share from experience that this school demonstrates a collaboration between their, excuse me, this district communicates a collaboration, strong collaboration between their schools, their restart schools. So we see a strong connection of collaboration and know that they will continue to have that support. As a note amongst their other four schools, they do have one school who is no longer recurring low performing, which is of course our goal, so. And as a total, if it were approved, we'd be at 153. Any questions?
Excellent. Questions? Fantastic, thank you for your time, Ms. Garber. Let you off the hook today. Moving on then to the last two items for discussion today, we'll bring up Ms. Sneha Shaw Coltrane. She'll first discuss, discuss EICS VII, and these, this is a recommendation for new cooperative innovative high schools in our state, and then she'll move right into EICS VIII, and that's the report that we're required to give to the JELOC on the career and college promise. So welcome back, we're excited to hear from you.
Thank you so much, I think item five of six today, so it's good to be with you all again. So today I bring to you new applications that have come in through school district and community partners for new cooperative innovative high schools. In case you are new to the board table, I have the session law here, just for your background information, I know we're a little short on time, so I won't go through all of it, but just know that we, we do have cooperative innovative high schools, some call them early colleges, there are all sorts of names for them, but there are also some early, some other high schools that call themselves early colleges that may not be a cooperative innovative high school. But officially in our state, we do have cooperative innovative high schools as part of our dual enrollment programming here in North Carolina, and we actually have 133 of them currently, of which 118 partner with our community colleges, our 58 community colleges, 11 partner with UNC institutions, and five partner with independent colleges. And I'm so excited to bring you one today with another independent. You will see on the slide and in your notes, our process for this, it is a long and arduous process that will, where we are now is you all will decide if these can go forward and recommend them. The appropriate boards at the Institutes of Higher Education will also approve them, and then the General Assembly approves them to either get extra funding or operate without funding. So it is, these schools and institutes of higher education go through a long process with that, and we're so grateful for their commitment. As a reminder, a couple of years ago, if I recall, or last year, one of the two, there was a new legislation that limiting the approval of three. So in years past, some years I brought seven, eight, one year I even brought more than that, we can only bring three. We do believe that we're almost at a saturation point when it comes to districts, and this year actually, we originally had about five that were interested in through the application process, they themselves realized two weren't ready, so three really strong ones worked out and, and bubbled up. So we do have two that are coming to you today, partnered with the community college, and one with an independent college, which is just super exciting. All of their paperwork is on file here. We have given you in your notes some summaries of their applications as well as a table, just so that you are aware. This whole process is overseen by Joint Advisory Committee through legislation, and we have partners with the community college, UNC system, and our independents, and we all have to come up to consensus with this as we bring them to each of the governing boards. Of course, locally, they've also been approved at the local board level and the institute level. So without further ado, today's also a great day for cooperative innovative high schools. We bring you Cabarrus Early College of Health Sciences in Cabarrus County, Edge Academy of Health Sciences in Edgecombe County, Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology with Wake County Public Schools. Now I'm going to quickly share with you a little bit about each. Cabarrus actually is partnered with an independent college, our Cabarrus College of Health Sciences, and Atrium Health. They've actually been working on this application through COVID, and actually prior to COVID. So this is an incredible partnership that is really going to allow our students to really go straight into the pipeline, looking at healthcare with Atrium as well. So we are just super excited about this healthcare focus, and all three of these schools really tied well with Superintendent Truitt's discussion that she shared with the chamber last week, really nicely meshed with our year of the workforce. The Edge Early College of Health Sciences, now our first Edgecombe, our wonderful Matt Bristol Smith School, is not at capacity, but it does meet capacity of the college, and so they are asking for a second location. This one too is going to be focused on health sciences, which again is really exciting. They have really put a lot of effort into prioritizing enrollment and recruitment, especially to serve low-income and underrepresented students. Again, very tied nicely into the local regional economic plan there, and we're super, super excited about that. And our last one is with Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology with Wake Tech. Again, another one that's really going to tie into the workforce as well as accelerating our. as well as accelerating our students to career preparedness based on their economic needs in that area. They do have a specific goal of recruiting at least 70% of first-gen college-going students, which is, is that my phone on the ground? No, somebody else's. Okay. I dropped my phone. So needless to say, all three of these schools really bring the best and the brightest of our educators focusing on student preparing our students for their future. So we ask and recommend to you to please approve these next month.
Ms. Dobber?
So thank you so much for the presentation. And as a teacher who had the privilege to teach at an early college high school on one of the 11 campuses on a four-year university at Fayetteville State University, I just wanted to recommend that we approve these three innovative or cooperative innovative high schools. Just incredible program that truly helps give our students different opportunities and helps prepare them for the workforce and helps them identify what they want to do in their post-secondary dream and helps them accomplish that. And so just an incredible opportunity for our kids and an incredible opportunity for our state.
I too have an operations question.
Yes.
Can a student who does not live in the county in which the cooperative innovative high school is approved, attend that school?
I think that would depend on local agreements. So we do have some partner cooperative innovatives that will say, just like in any other schools. Like for example, I lived in Durham and had a lot of neighbors who also taught at Chapel Hill. And they have a cross-agreement where if you live in Durham, either school, your kids can go. So it just depends on local agreements. And we do have one specific cooperative innovative that actually tri-county that they're specifically, part of it is all joint. But again, that's all a local agreement, but they could if that was determined locally.
Okay. I would be an advocate of allowing that to happen particularly in counties that do not have them, whose students would like to have access. If we're talking about equity of opportunities, if the student is able to drive and access that, we should be able to work that out.
We definitely support those conversations, for sure. There was just one the other day with Chapel Hill and how they have some of their students in Durham because they don't have one yet. They're thinking about it, but they already do that. So we would definitely favor and support that.
So what would we need to do to move that encouragement, past encouragement and into policy? Is that something that needs to appear in statute or could that be something?
I think that's a little bit larger of a conversation with business and finance and others about students going over lines, and that would be a little bit out of my expertise area.
Okay.
But that is something we can look at and let you know. I'll talk to Michelle's over there.
Thank you. If we could, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
No further questions on that? I will let you move right into your report on Career and College Promise.
Absolutely. I am sure all of you read this incredible 98-page document. I have no doubt that this front-loading of information was your nighttime reading. So once again, we bring to you an incredible report. Thanks to the team, both here at the department and across agencies, an incredible report really looking at all of our, North Carolina is another gem of our state that we're looked upon greatly for, our Career and College Promise Program, which is our dual enrollment program sponsored by the state of North Carolina. I have lots of information that you can, if you're interested, read through this. We have the requirements of it. I know we have kind of the law itself, how we do support structured opportunities. This is not the old learn and earn. This is not where a child just goes and take one course for the fun of it. Or let me just go experience this. This is really about following through completion, structured opportunities, so students truly leave even more ready for their post-secondary plans and whatever that is. There are three structured pathways. So I've already talked about cooperative innovative high schools today. I'll talk to you a little bit more about that. CTE and your college transfer pathways. Just to let you know, we did go up slightly last year. You know, I was pleased to see that we didn't drop dramatically. 32% of all graduates, all graduates in our state enroll in at least one dual enrollment class. And on average, they take about seven. Okay, so that's an incredible number, and that did go up a little bit even during COVID. And I'm super pleased about that. When we look at, and again, this does not include other college-level experiences like AP. So I just want us to relish this and celebrate it. That 32% of our graduates access college directly. And that is just pretty incredible for our state. We did break this down for you by subgroups, so you can see the percentages. We had increases in all areas except our Hispanic population. I would venture to say a lot of that had to do with almost all of the community college classes were online and continue, a lot of them continue to be online. So I do think that probably had a little to do with that, if I had to guess. But still, overall, great news is that we are gaining. I particularly want to take a note out for our native, popular, native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander. Really made a significant gain percentage-wise, which I just, I think is fantastic. So if I get a chance to drill down, I want to give kudos to those couple of districts that clearly made an intentional effort there. So overall, we did have, so that was the graduates that went up. Overall though, we do have a decline of about 4%. So I'll be curious to see what next year will look like, right? And that has to do with our ninth and 10th and 11th graders probably didn't enroll at the same rate. So I had said 32% enrolled, of graduates enrolled in at least one dual enrollment opportunity. 30% earned credit, okay, so 30% passed those classes. And on average, and you will see a lot more about this in the report, and if any of you are interested, I'm happy to point out the pages and things like that for you or walk you through it. But on average, our high school students outpace and perform the traditional community college student by a lot. And so I think that really speaks highly of the supports that our schools give and the colleges give. And that is just exciting news. We do, this year in the report, you'll see, we are in a five-year. We wrote a grant with Serve UNCG, a $5 million grant. And we actually have an additional staff member because of that. And you'll see some of their really interesting findings around different aspects of economically disadvantaged and so on and so forth. So some really interesting things in here. And if we have time next month, I'm happy to point out some of those research aspects that today I know, I don't, we'd rather keep going. So now I'm going to jump into just each of the pathways very, very quickly. It will not take long. We have, like I said, 133 cooperative innovatives. Already talked a little bit about that. What is really exciting is that those students earned over 1,700 credentials, CTE credentials, which is just super exciting. Our enrollment was slightly down this past year for cooperative innovatives. Again, I have a feeling some of our newer ones weren't able to recruit as much. So we'll look forward to seeing how that goes in the future. The other piece that I want to point out in particular is here. 9% more students were admitted into UNC system schools from our cooperative innovative high schools. And that, if you use that as a measure, it really just shows that we are really continuing to be on the right track of preparing our students to be career and college-ready. That is just super, super exciting. So we continue to improve our career and college promise. I'm sorry, that got really small. We really are doing a lot more with communication. We actually released several documents translated into Spanish this year for recruitment. We're going to be coming up with some videos of students and families talking about their experiences. Soon, we're going to be bringing to you some policy around MOUs to really put in some more netting for some of these students. We do great work, but every now and then I get a call about some students that fell through the cracks and where I think some systems could be in place to catch those students. So we want to make sure our districts and our colleges really are putting all of the scaffolding in that is necessary. We also did release a cooperative innovative Promising Practice Guidebook, which is just incredible. I'll actually probably bring you some copies tomorrow. I'm sorry, I didn't think about that today. Just so you can look at that, and we'll be making a similar one for CCP as well to continue to share in the stories. At the end of this and report, we do take an opportunity. There's lots of data in here to share, but we do ask our principals to share stories. I know some years we bring kids, students here with us and principals. I know last year we did. But there are just some three that I've highlighted here of the difference these programs make in the lives of students. People will say, gosh, you know, the investment we make is a lot. Absolutely. Cooperative innovative high schools and CCP, we make a significant investment as a state, but it also comes with significant returns. And if you get a chance, do look at some of these success stories. You know, one that I'll start with is just talking about how, you know, a child wrote, a student wrote, "Imagine waking up and being excited for school." Not many think this, however, what if there was a school like that? And Ash Early College is that place for me. And it goes on, one of the students at Craven Early College was born in a refugee camp and immigrated here when she was six. She is in the regionally increasing baccalaureate nurses program right now between ECU and Community College, where she got her start at Craven Early College. Wilks again talks about how there's this young man who struggles academically and misses school often. He has worked in the past three years over 50 hours a week for his family. And yet, with the support of Pitt Community, ooh, we have Pitt Community College here. Oh, he took an additional course. Wilks helped him get into an additional course. Sorry about that. Thank you, Isaac. Isaac knows these stories better than I do. Was able to be successful. So you see how these schools and these programs really do just bring, just like Maureen said, the future to these students in ways that are just incredible. And we continue to be a leader in this space nationally. And for that, I thank all of you.
So comments or questions about this wonderful update on our Career and College Promise? Hearing none, then we will thank you for your time. Before I mention our consent item, I just want to highlight as my absolute attention to Black History Month, a school of choice in Wake County High School named after a fine friend and African-American Senator Vernon Malone was quoted as saying, "Have faith in yourself. Dream big dreams. Study hard. Give back to the community. Look towards the future and never give up." So that is absolutely what we are giving these students. So thank you for your work in that field. The last item today for our committee is the report, excuse me, is our consent item. And that item is the Lake Lor Classical Academy bringing forward its amended version of its mission statement. And that will be before us tomorrow for action on consent. Mr. Chair, we're done.
Thank you, Ms. White. We'll now take a break and reconvene at 4:05. 4:05.
4:05. Final committee of the day is the Business Operations Committee led by Vice Chair Duncan. Vice Chair Duncan.
Thank you very much, Chair Davis. The Business Operations Committee has several items today, including actions on First Rate. BizOp 1 is approval of contracts over $500,000. We have contracts on cybersecurity, Power School, North Carolina EdCor, school bus financing, and NC ASBO. So showing our diligence to try to catch up. Michael Ramsey is already at the podium for the first of the one-minute reports on the contracts.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. Good afternoon, Chair Davis, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, Superintendent Truitt, Board members and guests. You cannot protect what you cannot see. Our first step toward improving K-12 cybersecurity in North Carolina is to increase each PSU's visibility into what is within their network by providing a tool that automatically provides an accurate inventory of all networked assets. This contract purchases a license to identify, classify, and categorize up to 1.5 million devices, reporting on a per PSU basis for local information, as well as providing a statewide view. Additionally, it will assist in the identification and reporting of cybersecurity vulnerabilities. This data will inform PSU staff and state leadership, and will also be able to augment and automate some of the DLMI data collection. This contracted amount is for $667,000, paid from the $9 million in ESAR funds for K-12 cybersecurity for one year.
Thank you. And the department recommends entering into this contract. Thank you. Dr. Rob Dietrich is next. Dr. Dietrich, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, members of the board, and guests, thank you. This contract is for the Student Information System renewal for Power School. Power School is the student information system that drives UERS reporting to include all federal CRDC and other reports, as well as there's a parent portal app with internal to the student information system. This contract is for two years with an optional third year carrying it through 2025 for a total of $29 million.
And just to further add to that, the intent is that this would carry us forward until we're in a place to perhaps go through a request for proposal where we would have a replacement for the present Power School?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Hence the optional third year.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And again, the department recommends this contract.
That's correct.
Very good. Dr. Michael Marr is next. Oh, we have a substitute. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Lynn Barber presenting on NC EdCor. This is an appropriation in the state budget for 13.5 million. NC EdCor partners with public school units to recruit, train, and deploy tutors within our PSU's. Very important work, and we're excited to put this forward. So the funds would be for, upon executed contract through September 20th, 2024.
And paid quarterly, or I believe, or is it monthly?
They will begin invoicing monthly and will move to quarterly.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Barber? Thank you, Dr. Barber. This is by statute that we're proceeding.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin Harrison, next. Respect to the always exciting annual bus financing contract.
The always exciting, that's the important part about this. The annual bus financing contract is pass-through contract for LEAs to finance school buses over four budgetary periods, four fiscal years. The '21-'22 rate recommending to award the lowest bidder. This year, we did have two bidders that were much closer than in previous years, so the contract bidding process is healthy, I would say. And it's, that's pretty much it. It allows us to facilitate school bus purchases across the state. This year, the number is a lower amount than in usual years because recession purchasing is the short answer, not because of the funding available this year, plenty of funding available, but 20 years ago, less funding was available.
And a little blip on the mileage in the last year or two.
Little blip on the mileage, which also lowered it even further, but mostly related to purchasing in 2001 that caused a smaller number this year.
All right, and so the successful bidder here for the contract is Bank of America, as it has been in the past?
Yes.
As Kevin said, it's one thing significantly, there was a bidding process, it was actually a competitive bid, and so that's a good and healthy sign, as you said. The other thing is the interest rate did go up ever so slightly, even with the competitive process, and that's more a reflection of the economy in terms of where things are with interest rates in these kinds of contracts.
Yep, 1.208% or $12.08 per thousand, $12.08 per thousand to have their money for four years, so to speak. And that is higher than last year significantly, but lower than 1920 and significantly lower than 1819, so.
Great. All right, unless there's any questions, thank you. Our last contract is Ms. Jennifer Bennett, who will bring to us the NC ASBO proposed contract. Oh.
Alexa Schaus, thank you, sir. Yes. So this contract is coming before you for a partnership with the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials for $2,225,000 for each of the next two years. The contract was provided in the appropriations bill with NC ASBO as the named partner. The services in the contract will include professional development courses, development and implementation, and training in North Carolina Public School Finance and related services. This professional development will be directed to local superintendents, Board of Ed, HR, and finance personnel. There will also be technical assistance, where there will be building a structure of technical assistance to the LEAs and charter schools who are identified as needing these services. Just to put this in perspective, we have 13 current finance officer vacancies, and we have a significant number of new finance officers in the field, as well as with this turnover, an increasing number of school districts that are being identified as needing this technical assistance.
Yes, thank you. And this is, again, by statute, and it's a welcome addition, as Ms. Schaus has said in the past, this is an area where that's kind of help that we need.
Yes, sir.
And will be very beneficial for our districts. All right, that ends BizOp 1. If there are any questions, as we've now had time to reflect on this series of quick contracts, discussions. All right, that brings us into BizOp 2, which is ESAR 3 Funding Policy allocations amendments for that on NC preschool pyramid expansion, PRC 190 STEM Pilot Program, PRC 196 Educational and Competitive After-School Robotics Grant Program, PRC 201, School Psychologist Grant Program, PRC 204, and the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards Certification Fee Reimbursement Program, PRC 198. And John Kiefer is here to bring us each of these items in a very concise manner.
Do my absolute best. All right, as noted, we have five ESAR 3 allotment policies to present today. These are coming from the 10% State Reserve, and were included in the Appropriations Act of 2021. The first is for the Preschool Pyramid Expansion Program. This is funded at $500,000 and will be administered by the Exceptional Children Division. This is by application rather than by formula, and priority is to be given to low-performing schools and LEAs that receive the state low-well supplemental funding, and that is a priority that's included in the Appropriations Act. And the funding will be used to provide training, consultation, and ongoing support for implementation of the preschool pyramid in pre-K and kindergarten classes. The next policy is for the STEM Pilot Program. This program is funded at $2,500,000 and will be administered by the Academic Standards Division. This will be a competitive grant, so by application again, and the Academic Standards Division is currently working on the criteria and process for applications. However, per the Appropriations Act, the funds can only be used for licensing fees for STEM-related education software developed by Plasma Games, as well as operational costs related to incorporating their software into STEM classes and CTE programs.
Any questions?
Keep moving on?
Just one. Who's doing the, on the first one, who's doing the training with the preschools receiving the funding? Is that DPI that's responsible for that training?
No, we will be providing funding to LEAs to contract for the training around the preschool pyramid model.
At their discretion?
I think that it's, my understanding is it is, it's like an established preschool model that is already being implemented with other funding that we provide to school districts, so this funding will support expansion of those efforts by the LEAs that are already participating. I think the EC Division plans to bring materials to the State Board either next month or the month after related to the applications. It will hopefully provide further information on the programmatic dynamics for this one.
If I may, these are funds appropriated by the legislature.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it was specifically for those activities to support the expansion of the preschool pyramid model.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, on to the next item.
Our next one is for the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards Certification Fee Reimbursement Program. Quite a mouthful. PRC 198. This grant program will be funded at $1,200,000 and will be administered by the Districts and School Turnaround Division. This is also by application rather than by formula. PSU's with qualifying public schools be able to apply to DPI for funds to, in order to reimburse teachers who are participating in the program. So the teachers will sign up and pay for the program and then be reimbursed with these grant funds. Can only be for teachers at qualifying public schools. Those are schools that have identified as low-performing, are part of the Innovative School District, or enroll a student body in the prior year consisting of at least 10% of students identified as at-risk. And the selection of teachers by public school units participating in the program is to be prioritized based on the number of qualifying factors of their school, with ultimate priority given to the highest percentage of at-risk students. So the schools, teachers at schools with the highest percentage of at-risk students are to receive priority when it comes to reimbursement for participation in the MBPTS program. And all of that is legislated. That is not criteria that we have created, but that was included in the Appropriations Act. Our next one is the Educational and Competitive After-School Robotics Grant Program. This grant program is funded at $1,600,000 and will be administered by the Academic Standards Division. This is another one that's by application. Interested PSU's can apply, but they do have to provide evidence that they have, they have or will establish a relationship with a robotic- establish a relationship with a robotics partner, the criteria for which are established in the Appropriations Act, and which are restated in the allotment policy that you've been provided with. And funds can be used for establishing that relationship to, as well as to purchase robotics kits, provide stipends for coaches, and to make payments for other costs related to administering a robotics team and participating in robotics competitions or leagues. And then finally, the School Psychologist Grant Program. This is funded at, at one million seven hundred thousand dollars and will be administered by the Exceptional Children Division. This is, again, by application, with the award of funds prioritized to school districts that do not employ a full-time school psychologist at the time the application is submitted. And these funds may only be, these grants will be awarded by the superintendent and may only be used to provide signing bonuses to recruit school psychologists, with the max signing bonus being five thousand dollars. As a condition of accepting the bonuses, the school psychologists do have to agree to remain employed by the public school unit for at least one year. So they won't be able to just take the bonus and then resign a month later. Any other questions about the final ones?
Any questions on any of these items that not already asked? I know we've already had one. Yes, Mr. Ford.
So, I lied, it's not a question, more of a comment. Is that, is that fair?
Yes.
Is that permissible?
Well.
Usually I have nothing to say during BizOp, so I mean, I'm excited to be.
We try to bring something for everybody.
Easily the sexiest committee of the entire board. But I just wondered if you all saw a report that came out from, it was an outside agency. I know we love outside agency ratings of our state. This one is the Education Reform Now Report, that looks at driving towards equity and looks at how states are spending their American Rescue Plan dollars. And it analyzes North Carolina as well as the other, all the states in the union. And we get pretty decent ratings on some things, but one of the things that got flagged was equity, lack of equity in our process. And specifically, one of the things that they point out is that when it comes to how the dollars are allocated, that there's not a whole lot of guardrails in our ability to determine how, holding LEAs accountable for addressing disproportionate impacts on, of the pandemic on students from historically disadvantaged groups, including low-income students of color, English language learners, students with disabilities. So I think it's informative, and I've learned a lot about how these monies are being spent. But I, I just wanted to look that up for us as a guidepost as we look at how our dollars are being spent. Are we making sure that they're really hitting our target groups, the ones that are really being left behind most by, by this? Take, take that, from that what you will. It's one rating from an organization that I thought was interesting.
All right.
Thank, thank you, Vice Chair. I'd love to, to respond and just provide a little more context of Mr. Ford's comments. So, of course, as we all know, ninety percent of the SRR dollars go out to districts with a ten percent state reserve or the state agency. The General Assembly appropriated that ten percent, both for SRR two and for SRR three. So DPI's role and, and also the State Board's role in that ninety percent of funds that went to PSUs is to provide an application. And we chose to, after I came into office, create a more robust application for our districts. And because we do not, neither the Board nor DPI has the authority to tell the districts how to spend those dollars, we, that's one of the reasons that I created the Office of Learn Recovery. So our ability to ensure what you're elevating relies on this, the Office of, of Learning Recovery's ability to build trust with our local, with our LEAs, and to hope that they take our recommendations. So the OLR has met with six out of eight RESAs and has personally been to twenty-five of our districts, most of which are, are economically disadvantaged and have small central office staff. And so our, while we, each LEA must submit their plan to federal programs and Dr. Townsend's department, all we can do is make sure that they adhere to their plan in order to be, to be compliant. The federal government has been very clear that as long, it's, it's, it's pretty open-ended how districts can spend that ninety percent, as long as it's COVID-related, and twenty percent must go for learning recovery writ large. And so while only nine percent of the SRR three ninety percent has been spent, those funds don't have to be expended until September of twenty twenty four. And what we're hoping is that we will, that, that our LEAs feel like they want to, for us to recommend ways that would be good for their students, for, for where this money should go. They can't use the money to build a new athletic facility, for example, but they could choose something that maybe isn't aligned with the science of reading, in which we would say, you know, this is not evidence-based, maybe look at this instead. But that unfortunately is the extent of our ability to influence how that ninety percent is spent.
So can I, can I ask a question to make sure I understand?
Yeah.
So essentially, there's no way to force PS, which is fine, right?
That's right.
I mean, it wants to be forced, right?
Right.
But there are ways that we can still prioritize and elevate, to use your term, this notion of targeting those dollars toward those student groups that have been most adversely impacted either by the COVID nineteen pandemic or just historically, right, as a part of that larger learning recovery plan. How, how, and I think, I could think of a million ways to do this, right, either by referencing sort of what we did at the AIM Conference, right, and tie everything together with our strategic plan, our Operation Polaris, and what have you. How would you envision ways that we could compel folks to prioritize equity as a part of that strategy, even if not forcing them to?
We can't compel them. What we can do is make recommendations that are specific to their population of students, which is why it's, and that's only if they come to us for help. There will be districts who will not accept our help. But lots of districts are asking for help. And so we want to, again, look at their, and, and remember, there's only five people on the OLR team. You've got about two people who are trying to go and meet with as many districts as possible. Now, Dr. Edmund's Office of Equity is meeting, and as is Dr. Cynthia Martin, are meeting with our bottom five percent, our lowest-performing schools, to try and tailor their spending as well. So we've got two entities that are attempting to partner with the, the populations you're describing.
So can't compel, and maybe that is a poor usage of that term. Advise, influence.
We can advise.
There you go. Okay. Can we recommend or advise and say perhaps, yes, specific to your populations? But there are trends, right? And can we look at the data and say, the data suggests these are the populations?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely. That's what, I mean, I, I would, is Michael here? Okay. If, if I, I would, I, I don't want to take up more time, but I would strongly suggest that if there are specific concerns that you have, that, that you schedule a meeting. And I mean, they are all over this. And it's, again, it's about building trust with districts and hoping that they accept our recommendations.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else for John?
Madam, Vice Chair.
Yes, my doubt.
Thank you, sir. Madam Superintendent, did this same question somewhere come up yesterday in your committee meeting with the General Assembly members?
Yes, sir, it did.
And you answered affirm in the same way, so.
Yes, sir.
I fully understand. I fully understand that. I was just waiting to see if it was going to be different, but you were right on the spot.
I am what I am.
Better term. I, I, yeah, maybe not that, not the best term. But the same question came up, if I remember correctly.
It, it did. There's, there's, I mean, obviously, we're, we're talking about, at the end of the day, like six billion dollars just for.
Yes.
Public schools. And there's a lot of anxiety about how districts are going to, to spend this money. And while, what, what, what people need to understand is that SRR one was all about COVID mitigation. There were no students in, in school, really. So it, it was not about learning recovery and learning loss. SRR two largely went to summer school programs, for which you all will hear a report next month, that will share that eighty-six percent of the students served in the summer learning program, summer extension learning, were at-risk students, which is great news. And then, of course, only, I believe, forty percent of the SRR two funds have been expended. But again, they don't need to be expended until September of twenty three.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Jay Jay.
Thank you. So just piggybacking on the productive conversation that Mr. Ford and our superintendent had, for any charter schools or LEAs that are listening, we absolutely want to partner with you to mitigate the impact of COVID on your students, and go beyond that to raise their academic achievement beyond where it was when COVID hit. So I know lots of times you hear from government that we're here to help. We're really here to help. We don't have all the answers, but we've got a lot of people with some really good ideas and experience, having walked in those shoes before. And so this is an open invitation to please give us a chance to partner with you, because whatever the results are, we're going to own them together, and we really want to help you. We know you have a tremendous challenge in front of you. It's the same challenge we have, and we would just like to lend any aspect of our expertise, thoughts, and partnership to support you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, that's one of the best policy amendment discussions we've ever had.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. BizOp three, Twenty First Century Community Learning Centers. This is Cohort sixteen, and.
One more part to BizOp.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Try to be brief and describe this as clearly as I can for you. In the current biennial budget, the General Assembly appropriated forty-four million dollars in the first year of the biennium for K-12 athletic facility grants at schools in North Carolina. Thirty-one point three seven six million of that was in the form of, of nineteen directed grants to specific projects in specific LEAs. Those will be administered directly by OSBM. There was another grant of twelve point six two four million to DPI to administer to sub-receipients per agreement with OSBM and at their direction, and under the requirements of some of the laws that are cited in this, in this policy proposal. So what we've decided to do is bring you a recommendation that we administer these to the remaining ninety-nine LEAs that did not receive a directed grant in the, in the budget law, with a base allotment of a hundred thousand dollars, a base grant amount of, of one, one hundred thousand dollars. And the remaining balance of that twelve point six million distributed on a paradiem basis to those, those same ninety-nine LEAs. There's an agreement required with each sub-recent, each non-state entity, to be executed with DPI. And that MOA will detail reporting requirements, compliance measures, and, and other provisions that are required by law for these monies. This is the first time that the state has appropriated capital funds for K-12 schools to the, the State Capital and Infrastructure Fund, which is, the shorthand is SCIF, S-C-I-F. That fund is, is normally used for capital projects at state-owned facilities, not at locally owned, non-state facilities. So we may see more of these appropriations for other purposes in the future, but these are specifically for repairs and renovations to athletic facilities.
Are, are these focused on some COVID theme in some way, since they're SRR three funds?
No, these are not. These are appropriations to the, from the general fund, as I understand it. So these are not related to SRR funding. And they do not revert until the funds are expended. And if they are unexpended, they will revert to the State Capital Infrastructure Fund. So there's no fiscal year deadline for these. They, they don't expire.
Ms. White?
Included in that ninety-nine number are the school for the, the two schools for the deaf and the school of the blind included in those ninety-nine?
No, they're not.
Why not?
I might need to defer to experts. I don't believe that they're, they're, they receive a paradiem allotment for other purposes in the same way. They don't receive capital lottery funds, no, for other, under the other capital funds that we manage.
Is that per, per statute by our friends in the General Assembly? What, what, what guides that? You, you may not be unprepared for this question.
Yes, I am.
And so that's okay. I would love that, on a different day, when we have a long, longer time to, I'd like to know, and.
We'll try to get you the answer by tomorrow.
I'd love to see those schools receive a portion of those funds, if we're just giving away money for athletic facilities. Equity of opportunity for students with disabilities.
Any other questions for Nathan? We'll try to get you that answer by tomorrow.
Thank you.
The specific question about what the authority is, or why they would not be included is what I heard in the question.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now will go on to BizOp three, the Twenty First Century Community Learning Center Grants. This is Cohort sixteen, and welcome, Dr. Townsend. This is the, going through the process now.
Hello. I feel like you have heard an iteration of this presentation many times before.
Which tells us we can be real concise.
Really concise. So these, so good afternoon, esteemed board members, advisors, and guests. So these funds actually emanate out of our ESSR funds, and so they are Title IV, Part B. And the purpose of these funds is to provide high-quality opportunities for students. We are looking to ensure students have opportunities to have academic opportunities as well as enrichment opportunities. Many of our programs offer things such as robotics, dance, mindfulness, you name it. Anything to really expand what types of opportunities that we have available for our students. And so with these grants, they're a little bit different than other ones in our portfolio. Individuals are eligible to apply if they fall into one of these five categories. And so our LEAs, community-based organizations, city or county government agencies, faith-based organizations, IHEs, as well as for-profit corporations. And we have a good mix of all of them. In terms of this grant, we are, according to the allotment policy, we are offering anywhere from fifty thousand to four hundred thousand dollars per year for the next three years. The amount that you receive will depend on the number of students that you are servicing and the duration of the programming that you're doing. Some are school year programs, some are school year and summer. It just depends on the specific program. The absolute priority for this particular grant is for organizations who are going to be serving students that are eligible to participate in Title I, Part A school-wide programs. Another priority comes to us if you are willing, a community organization is willing to partner with an LEA. So a partnership will allow you to have an additional priority. And then if we go on to the next set of priorities. Okay. And so within that, if schools are CSI or TSI identified, you could receive one or two points for that. you could receive one or two points for that. If you are proposing a summer component to the programming, you would receive one point for that. If you are proposing to operate in an extended fashion, so offering before school or either offering programming on Friday, Saturday or Sunday. And then, number four, when I met with the board last time, as we talked about, the summer mini-grant, we went back to the team to try to think about how we could really think about that equity that you talked about. You talked about entities receiving the grants who were continuously receiving them, and there were areas within the state that were receiving them more frequently than others. And so if you will note, one of the things that we actually did was to change how we make selections. And so our first change was to actually offer an equal number of programs across each of the regions. So we started there. But the board, you challenged us and you said that wasn't enough. And so in this case, what we were able to do is to do an analysis to see who would receive those programs. So on the next slide, you will see how we're planning to address that. So you would receive two points if you are proposing to operate a program in one of these counties. These counties have not had a program over the last three cycles. So our cohort thirteen, fourteen or fifteen did not have programs that existed within these counties. And so this is our attempt to get at what you were saying. You said regional wasn't enough, so now you'd get some additional competitive points if you were to operate a program in one of these counties. And so this goes back to what I was saying. We will start by offering an equal number of slots across the regions. And then if there is additional funding that remains, we will then do a rank order process. Okay? And then I, as always, we are providing our grant timeline. And so again, if we receive approval today, we will begin our process of doing technical assistance. And then we will come back to you in July with our recommendations for Cohort Sixteen.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Let me thank you on behalf of the board for the continued efforts that you, you and your staff have put into assuring that all, all our students throughout the state are able to have the opportunity to take advantage of these programs that your department worked so hard on. So thank you very much for the continued work.
Your work. Thank you.
Our last action on first reading I am today is Biz Op Four, which is the North Carolina State School Improvement Project allotments. These are focused on professional development for our, our students with disabilities. And we have Ginger Cash here. Welcome, Ginger.
Yes, thank you. I am Ginger Cash. I'm the section chief for Program Improvement, Professional Development and Exceptional Children's Program. We have the pleasure of getting a renewal of this grant for the next five years. And as you see up on the screen is the folks who have submitted an intent to participate. So this was advertised across all districts through our weekly EC communication, as well as my regional consultants reached out to, especially all of the districts in their areas, giving priority to those districts who are considered low wealth or have low performing schools. So they specifically reached out to those EC directors to assist them to complete this intent to participate. So as you see on the spreadsheet that you have, you have the groupings as far as the regions. You have the districts who completed that intent to participate, their request amount, their priority area, as well as the amount that we are proposing for them. We do have a no-cost extension, and some of these folks are participating, did participate in our last cycle. And so we have to expend those no-cost extension funds as well as these new funds by September. It needs to be encumbered by September as well as expended by December. So that was taken into consideration as we thought about giving these allotments. Again, we gave priority in determining these allotments based off of if they had low-performing schools, if they were considered a low-wealth district. And the other consideration that we included was ADM. So what was their overall ADM, but specifically what was their head count for students with disabilities? So this particular grant supports, promotes and coaches professional development around effective teaching practices to improve outcomes for all students, especially students with disabilities. So these are our proposed. Does he may have any questions?
Questions or comments from Ms. Cash? Thank you for the work that's gone into thinking this through. That's the end of our actions on first read. We do have an action item that we discussed before, Biz Op Five, which is the Policy Amendment Modifications to the North Carolina Benefits Policy Manual. I've got Dr. Tomberlin on this. And make any brief update. We have discussed this and then...
Yes.
And then any questions that the board members have?
Sorry. Yes, we discussed this, the issue of the reason, which is later on in the policy. We discussed this with our, at our Human Capital webinar with all state HR directors and then with our teacher recruitment and task force. And the overwhelming feedback was that LEAs do not want to identify specific reasons. And so we have stricken that, that section from the, from the policy. And any reason provided by the teacher will, will trigger the, will prevent the substitute deduction from being applied.
So we've had some very good past discussion on this, trying to make sure we've been fair. Are there any additional comments now that the discussion's been had? People have gone back and tried to work through this policy? All right. Not hearing any, then that will be up for vote also tomorrow. We now move to Biz Op Six, which is a discussion item. It's the Report to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee on the Credential Bonus Program. And we bring Nancy Cross back after her earlier appearance today.
Thank you for, yes. Thank you for having me again this afternoon. I am excited to share with you our credential bonus report that goes to the General Assembly in March. And to start with a historic view and thinking back to the fact that we just started collecting and reporting credentials in about 2010. And through the years, we realized all credentials were not created equal, very much like the conversation we had this morning. And so then the process became, let's establish a mechanism for evaluating credentials. And really, two factors rose to the top of that conversation. And those two factors were the academic rigor of the credential and the employment value of the credential. So DPI collaborated with the Department of Commerce's Labor and Economic Analysis Division, also known as LEAD, to evaluate those two factors among all of our one hundred and forty-four individual or combined credentials. And so when that initially was done in 2015, sixteen, it has since been reevaluated each year annually. That happens. So of the current one hundred and forty-four individual or combined credentials we offer, thirty-two of them are considered Tier Three. Tier Three credentials are both high academic, high in academic rigor and high in employability value. Examples would be Python programming or Adobe Premier, Premier Pro. Tier Two credentials are either high in academic rigor or high in employability value. An example would be Microsoft Excel Expert. And then there are seventy-four Tier Two, by the way. And then Tier One, there are thirty-eight. So the much, that's probably, well, thirty-eight out of one hundred and forty-four, so about a third of the total credentials. And that would be all others. So they're not necessarily considered high in employability value or in academic rigor as a standalone credential. However, often they're used to ramp up to Tier Two or Tier Three. For example, a student can't take the Nursing Fundamentals course or earn their CNA, their Certified Nurse Assistant, if they don't have CPR. So while that in and of itself is not a high-value credential, it leads to a credential that is considered to be high-value. So the transformation of our credentialing program has certainly started. It's based on our comprehensive local needs assessment process, partnerships with business and industry leaders, and careful pathway alignment and realignment. I want to demonstrate to you that transition. So if you look at Tier, a Tier One credential, for instance, Microsoft Word. In 2018, nineteen, just two years before this year's report, eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight Word credentials were earned. The next year, after we started these in-depth conversations about academic rigor and high employability skills, the number dropped to eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-one. And then last year, the number dropped to three thousand six hundred and thirteen. That was only nineteen percent of the number earned two years previously. So the conversation has started and the work has started to shift from Tier One to Tier Two and Three credentials. Demonstrated in our Tier Two would be Microsoft Excel Expert. We earned seven hundred and one in the 1920 year and have earned already, just in half of this school year, eight hundred and thirteen. We've already exceeded the total number of Tier Two credentials in Excel Expert that were in last year. And then in Tier Three, our overall number of Tier Three credentials in 1920, so just at the beginning of the pandemic, we earned two thousand four hundred and seventy-one Tier Three credentials. But during the peak of the pandemic, our students earned three thousand five hundred and seventy-three Tier Three credentials. A great example is to look at Python programming that I mentioned earlier. It went from four hundred and eight students earning that credential to one thousand and sixty-nine. Two hundred and twenty percent increase from 1920 to the 2021 school year. Twenty-seven percent of the credential potential for Python was achieved. In other words, of all the students who took Python, twenty-seven percent of them earned that credential. As compared to Microsoft Word and PowerPoint, where only twenty and twenty-two percent of the students respectively earned those credentials. So our students are credentialing in Tier Two and Three at a higher level. But it makes sense that because Tier One are introductory credentials, they're also offered in introductory courses which have higher enrollment. Tier Two and through Tier Three, which are more advanced credentials, higher employability, higher academic demand, are then offered in higher-level courses with lower enrollment. So percentage-wise, our students are performing with Tier Two and Tier Three credentials extremely well, and that transition is continuing to happen. And then, of course, with the summary, you can see the amount of money that was allocated across a hundred and ten PSUs for over a thousand teachers in three hundred and fifty-six schools. And here are our top ten PSUs for credential bonus payment allocation. It's not surprising to see some of our larger districts on this list. But when you take the top ten allocated districts, they represent almost half of the bonus money that was paid this year. The other requirement attached to this bonus is a report on how it impacts teacher retention. That was part of why this bonus was put into place. And because the funds were reallocated last year and there was no CTE teacher credential bonus paid in the 1920 school year, we don't have new data to report. But we did include and share with you the data from the previous year's bonus awardees as to the impact on their decision to stay in education. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions? All right. This report will be, come back to us in March to be received. Probably be a consent agenda item at that point unless there's any questions that arise. And then we'll submit it to the General Assembly before the March fifteenth deadline. Thank you for the report, for the work that went into it.
Thank you.
We have, we have, we're going to have one consent item, and that will be ironically, after hearing Michelle's talk about this, it will be a consent item for placement of several new CFOs in districts around the state certification of those positions. And that will, that will be very good for the districts who, again, as Michelle's indicated, there's, there's a shortage, if you will, for getting qualified people into these positions right now. In terms of contracts, we have executed contracts report and planned contracts report, which you have had. I think Shannon Hanchi is here if there's any questions. I have not heard any questions on those, but I will pause in case there are any questions on any of those contracts. All right. Not hearing any, then we'll go to our monthly budget report for February. Ms. Chow says, again, has a small, if you will, piece of the budgetary discussion for us. And I believe you have Dr. Colbert and Ms. Murphy also to participate with you.
I do. I brought a friend, so...
Always good to do.
So, you know, we've been doing these budget primers by request of the board, and we started out kind of on the global level. And now we're in kind of the, looking at various programs within, that are under the DPI organization. And last month, that was the Excellent Public Schools Act budget. This month, we've, we've selected the North Carolina Virtual Public School Budget to present to you and kind of explain. I know the NCVPS provides you kind of a programmatic report on an annual basis. And this is kind of more looking at the nuts and bolts of the, of their budget. So I am joined today by Dr. Mia Murphy and Liz Colbert. So they will be taking the second half of this, this presentation. So when we're looking at the, the breakdown of the budget as a whole, the total budget is about twenty-three and a half million dollars. They do about fifty-five thousand courses during that year, spread out between fall, spring and year-long. And so you can see that the direct instruction, that eighty-two percent is going to be your, the direct course instructor costs. And then the state-level program support is kind of those other supporting expenditures. And then, of course, administration that is necessary to make sure the program is successful. When we're looking at all the revenue sources, we actually have the majority by legislation of those funds are transferred from public school units, from a teacher allotment, as well as the non-instructional support allotment. That actually encompasses about ninety percent of the revenues. And then there is a small amount for tuition, small amount state appropriation. And then this year, an unusual item for NCVPS, they did receive ESER II money for summer extension learning. When we're looking at the instructional side of it, the, as I stated, there is a transfer from the teacher allotment that's used for the direct cost, that is the instructor salary, the state leadership piece being that they are the other educational costs for the program that are not teacher salary. And then there is a reserve that, we'll get into a little bit more, but it is to provide funding for expenditures that exceed the projection, the initial projection, because the legislation does hold NCVPS to the funds generated from, they are not permitted to reduce the public school units beyond that initial, initial projection. Here is the legislation. The legislation is, it's very explicit in, and it's been there for several years now. So the school districts are used to it, although not always terribly happy with it. The, it, it requires us initially to project the NCVPS enrollments by public school units. So that includes all the public school units, charter schools and LEAs. And we use a historical basis, so based on the historical use, it projects out the, the future use. The NCVPS, they establish a per-student course fee that is a break-even number, and that is related to those, that direct instruction. And then at the beginning of the year, seventy-five percent of that projected cost is reduced from that classroom teacher allotment and the non-instructional support allotment categories. I'm making it somewhat simplified because, of course, with charter schools, they don't receive that funding like that, so it comes from their base allotment. Same thing with lab schools and the ISD, et cetera. So then in February, the end of February, that is this, this month, we will receive the actual enrollments. And based on that, we will calculate the actual instructional cost by each public school unit and true them up. In other words, we will make additional adjustments to reduce those allocations, but not to exceed that initial projected amount. That actually, if there is any in excess of that initial projection, then that does come from the, the reserve. That actually, if there is any in excess of that initial projection, then that does come from the, the reserve. These are the projections from as of February, excuse me. These are the actual enrollments as of February 16th that we have. And you can see there the fees that were determined by NCVPS. They are obviously a significant, this is a, a big operation in the volume that goes through this, this entity within DPI. I should state that when we're looking at those enrollments, and of course, I stated that we, we project based on historical enrollments in the last two years. With COVID, that, that has been a challenge to get those, those amounts accurate. Just like back in February, I talked about the average daily membership projections and the impact of COVID on being able to have reliable numbers for that. So the allotment reduction for the reserve, this is not the, this is kind of for those to cover the excess enrollments. It is reduced from the non-instructional support allotment for $8 per 612 ADM. And it supports those enrollments, as I said, above that projection. We are, there is a maximum set by legislation of a reserve that cannot exceed more than $2 million. But it can, any unused reserve does carry forward to the next year. This year, we reduced the all public school units for $2.35 for every six through 12 average daily membership. When we're looking at the instructional costs as a whole, you can see there, not surprisingly, that 90% that is generated by that transfer from the allotment categories, the first two numbers being the 15.7 million and the $2 million. The other items, you'll see the excess enrollment. That was what was needed to cover the additional enrollments above that reserve for this past year. And then the course fees paid, it's a relatively small amount, 325,000. I have rounded these numbers. But that is the amount that some public school units prefer to use other sources of funds to pay for their, their courses and not just rely on that teacher allotment, non-instructional support transfer. This might keep their projections kind of more on a, a level basis and not having an increase or decrease from year to year. And then we also have an additional small public, non-public schools that pay for the services provided by NCVPS. I'm going to turn over now to the true experts in this field so they can address the state leadership and the administration piece.
Good evening, good evening now. Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, Lieutenant Governor Robinson, the board, and our listening audience. So I'm just going to share a brief insight on the administrative funding allotment and our use of that funding. The allotment for the administration of NC Virtual is actually based on grade 6 through 12 ADM of the PSUs. The PSUs are, their non-instructional support allotment is reduced. For 2021, that amount was $4.71 per 6 through 12 ADM, for a total of 3.99 million for our operating budget. We also had an additional state appropriation. So I'll just talk briefly about how we utilize the funds. So like most divisions, our largest expenditure is salary and benefits. Once those are paid, we have a much smaller amount to actually innovate. And so the majority of that, those funds are used for course development. That's including improvement, contracts, the various tools and software that are needed to ensure that we have course quality. The majority of our budget is actually used for that. We did want to say thank you again for approving flat salary funding for Quality Matters Certification for us. That had been the biggest barrier was actually having enough funds to ensure that all of our courses are, go through that external validation. So we definitely appreciate that additional funding that we received in 2021 for Quality Matters Certification. Also want to, and Ms. Chow's already highlighted that we did, and we thank you again, for approving ESER 2 funding. And so for, we use this to actually pay for all of the summer enrollments for the, the PSUs who are enrolled with us for '21, '22. And we do have an additional, a remaining balance that we will use for subsequent enrollments for this summer. So luckily, we were able to take care of all the summer enrollments for our districts and charters. So I will actually turn it over to Dr. Colbert to give a Quality Matters Certified Courses update.
So this was a special request to highlight again that North Carolina Virtual is committed to Quality Matters. Quality Matters is the accrediting body for online learning. They do it for higher ed, and now they are growing into K-12. So the first line says it all, we're the national leader. We have the most courses accredited of any K-12 institution in this, in the country. I was going to say the state, but it's in the country. And it's in thanks to you and that money Dr. Murphy pointed out, because like everything, it costs money. So thanks to you, we've been able to receive this status. So 64% of the courses are certified. We have four in the process now. We have 14 in line to go. Quality Matters is a small organization, so they only take a few at a time. So that's why it's 14 in line. So are there any questions about this? I mean, this is our, we are so proud of this and we could not have done it without you. I mean, that's the only way to put it, so thank you.
Well, thank you for the update on this. Of course, that was an issue that we dealt with about a year or so ago. And so the way that you all have handled that so well, we're, you have reason to be excited. And we're thankful for, for being in such a good place nationally.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you for that report. Any, any questions for anyone on the board? Well, we appreciate these continued, I guess what we'll call mini seminars on the budget. They're very helpful and informative, so thank you. On the implementation report, we have Dr. Townsend with a limited report on some of the CARES Act categories that we are following up on to keep the board closely apprised of how things are being implemented.
Right, and so Dr. Marb and I had an opportunity to discuss this ongoing report. And so what he has done is to go through, I guess, and make somewhat of a checklist to see which ones you've heard and which ones you have not. And so today, I will be talking to you about four of them. And I will, I guess, speak about them, I guess, thematically. So within ESER 1 and ESER 2, charter schools received a bit of money to make sure that they were going to be on par with LEAs in terms of what they were receiving. And so if you will recall, with ESER funds, entities are actually eligible to receive ESER funds if they receive Title I Part A funds. And so you were eligible to receive the same proportion of ESER funds as you receive from Title I Part A. So if you receive 0.05% of the state's total allocation, you would then receive 0.05% of the ESER allocation. So what we note often, many of our charters, either they are not eligible or they choose to waive those funds. And so because they did not take, if they were eligible and they chose to waive them, then that made them ineligible to receive ESER funds. So in an effort to make sure that all PSUs had an opportunity to access these funds, the state board in ESER 1 actually offered $45 per ADM to those charters. And so at this point, I guess what I really would like to highlight to you is that this is the companion to PRC 163 or that 90%. And so there are some charters that received a little bit of 163, but if they didn't get enough to get them up to that $45 per ADM, they would then also get 164. There also might be a group of charters who did not get any 163, and they're only getting 164. But this becomes their general use funds. They follow the allowable uses that are specified for that 90%. And when we look across how charters are spending in this particular category, they have about, they have, they have about 13% left here. And then if you look across regular ESER 1, it's about 15%. So it's on par. And so the same is true when we look across charter schools, when we look at ESER 2. So the companion, I always call it the companion PRC. We treat those the same as we think about monitoring and how we actually process those allocations. Slide 19. So we received the, well, the General Assembly appropriated $10 million for this purpose. And with those, we were able to offer $180 per ADM. And so in this case, the same is true as you look across spending patterns. About 6.9 million remains here, or about seven, or about 70%. And then when you look in, when you look in the companion or the original 90%, that's about 63%. So our charters are spending on par. One of the things I'd like to forecast for you is that I will be coming before you to make a presentation to help you understand there's been a lot of questions surrounding monitoring. And so our charters and our PS, and, and our LEAs, they are treated the same as it relates to how we monitor the compliance of these dollars. And so in a forthcoming presentation, we will be able to provide you some information there. And so the next two items that I'd like to share with you, they remind me a little bit of our 21st century. And so going back to ESER 1, for ESER 1, we actually had a grant called ICARES. And so ICARES, it was designed to be able to allow schools to provide services. Really, initially, it was for, for frontline workers. And so this was frontline workers, teachers, to be able to provide support while students were out of school. And so this was something, there were learning labs that were created. There was also some after-school programming. And so for this particular grant, we were able to work with 13 recipients. And what I'll tell you for this, we have about 39% of those, that's slide number eight. 13% of the, sorry, I'm sorry, 39% of those funds remaining here. What we've been doing is providing technical assistance with those recipients to basically say, okay, how are you going to continue to expend these dollars? We have recently done a survey. And additional, additional one-on-one technical assistance will begin to happen this month. And for this one, there will be a report that's forthcoming in November at the conclusion of this grant, which would be September 30th of 2022. And so we'll be able to look at some program impacts. And then similarly, in ESER 2, a program that I want to highlight for you, you just received this particular report. It's a J-LOCK report that will be going forth, a report provided to you in a Friday update. And so it is the Ellis Program. The Ellis Program, it actually is an ongoing program through federal programs. It's before our coronavirus relief funds. It was a state-funded program. And so Ellis allows us to be able to provide support to students either during the school day or in an after-school capacity. And so what you will notice about the Ellis Program, I feel like it's one of our most robust programs that offers student supports. There are two particular ways in which grantees end up engaging with students. And so there's extended learning opportunities, which you're very familiar with. Those extended learning opportunities are before and after school, summer. But the one that I get really excited about would be the integrated student supports. And so in a lot of cases, these are social-emotional supports. We've got graduation coaches. It just depends on how the entity is choosing to move this forward. The report you got from J-LOCK is pretty much just a kickoff report. The report that you receive in the coming years will be able to provide you some additional outcome metrics. But we are really excited. These grantees were just awarded their funds at the end of the year. And we have, of those, we have nine that are in a planning phase. And then the other five, there are five that are in a partial implementation. And we have five that have hit the ground running and are in full implementation mode. And so those are the updates for the four that I wanted to bring to you this month.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions or comments about those, the progress being made with respect to those four PRC areas? All right, not having heard any, we have an agency vacancy report that Mr. Paxton, Mr. Ron Paxton, reported to us last month on, Ron, I see you approaching, if there's any questions on the agency report this month, then he is here.
And one of the things I'd like to do is go to slide five, if you would, and just point out that in the prior month on slide five, lower corner, one more down. One more down. Now, where we had vacancies with no recruitment activity last month, or last time we reported, we had seven of those that were state-appropriated positions, or had state-appropriated funding. This month, we have one. And that, the reason for that is we have allocated or reassigned those other six positions to other areas where we need support. So we are actively looking at our positions and looking at ways to repurpose those in the organization where we need them. So that's another sign of progress. The numbers are moving in the right direction and we're doing the things that we're trying to, you know, to manage those assets very well. We also have, we've got some positions that we need for ESER support and administrative support. We've had some challenges with some of the, the audit and the accounting positions. And we've contacted a couple of audit firms and consulting firms. And we're looking at contracting for some of those folks so we can get experienced auditors to come in, do project work to support those efforts. And we're continuing to look and post for those positions. We have a couple of promising candidates, cross your fingers. You know, we grab a couple of those and we get some of these audit consultants to come in and pick up some of those rocks, we'll be, we'll be okay. So we've had a lot of, a lot of moving parts and a lot of things going on. And we're doing, you know, the work we can to support those efforts.
Just to second that, after some study, this seems to be the best way to try to work through the audit issues. We want to hire whoever we can. In fact, we've got more internal audit positions authorized in the legislature this year. And so they're needed positions, and we're very, as Ron says, very anxious to hire those folks. In the meantime, we also want to take advantage of the federal funds because we have to use them to make sure we're monitoring from an auditing standpoint compliance. And the best use of those funds may be to work on contracts as opposed to full-time hires where we get talented people with consulting background to come in and support the work that needs to be done. So appreciate the work that you're doing to fit that together. Any questions on this? All right, not hearing, not hearing any, we're done. We're 16 minutes past time, but we're not claiming all the credit for that. I think, I think there's plenty of credit to be shared.
No argument from me, Vice Chair Duncan. Thank you so much. So many thanks to board members, staff, our superintendent, and all those who participated in today's meeting. This concludes our committee updates. I now ask for a motion to go into closed session and note for the audience and online listeners that following closed session, this February 2nd, 2022 meeting, will adjourn immediately. Vice Chair Duncan.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11, A1, 3, and 6, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Sections 115(c) - 319 and 321, to consult with our attorneys in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the public body, including specifically to consider the cases of Candy Wood versus DPI, Enray Bridges Educational Foundation, Inc., and Kathy Reeves v. Freddie Williamson, Ed Al, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of public officers or employees, or prospective public officers or employees.
Motion by Vice Chair Duncan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. White. Dr. Townsend. Dr. Townsend Smith?
Yes, sir. Ms. Kamens?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Mr. Keenan? Mr. Hall? Thank you. Mr. Keenan?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, I'm at the table.
Thank you. Dr. Detective Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. White?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes. Motion carries, let's get into closed session at five twenty-five, five twenty-five.
If those of you online.